Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We call the meeting to order. Bill, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrek.
Here.
Okay, our first item are presentations. We have a brief water update, or are we having one at all? Are we?
Angelo's here.
Okay, Angelo, you're on. Yeah.
I had nothing to do with this.
We found the problem, though.
That'll be the next thing we study.
Can we ban those?
Yep.
Isn't that gonna be embarrassing when that turns out to be the explanation at some point in the future?
I know.
The suspense is killing me.
We just had to reboot.
There we go. My presentation isn't going to be the same old boring data-filled presentation that I've done before.
It's gonna be a new data-filled, boring presentation.
We're gonna address some different things this time. And what I'd like to bring up tonight are four issues that are impending on us right now concerning water for the Ojai Valley. There are a lot of other issues that are out there lurking that are gonna come up little by little, but I think these are four that we really need to pay attention to. State Water Project, Casitas-Ventura Water Service Agreement, Golden State Water Takeover, and the Water Advisory Board. This is a chart that I first showed you back in November that describes the state water piping tie-in, state water tie-in piping. And I guess the important thing I'd like you to notice again is the 30-inch line on the left-hand side, that comes down from the Casitas system and ends up at Oliva and Ramona, just behind the Mission in Ventura. As laid out originally, it was assumed that we were going to pull water from the Key Agus system, that's on the right-hand side, and those are the potential locations for pulling the water. There's a vertical arrow on the left-hand side that's above seven miles 30-inch pipe, and that's what I'd like to talk about next. I talked with Ventura Public Works last week, and the two capital improvement programs I mentioned to you before about Ventura running lines from Saticoy West across Ventura, the two capital improvement programs are there in the small print. It's about 20,000 feet of 30-inch line, and that construction is going to start next year. The work is being done in-house in Public Works Engineering, so they anticipate that work will start on those 30-inch lines in 2018. And it looks like that 30-inch line is gonna run to the Five Points in Ventura, which is roughly three miles from the end of, I call it R, from the end of the 30-inch line from Casitas. So keep in mind that three miles. As I mentioned before, if you look at these circles, the original termination point going east was either gonna be at Price Road on Highway 118 or at Somas at Highway 118. It's my understanding that the engineering study now has found a more favorable site, and that's at the Springville Reservoir. And who has ever heard of the Springville Reservoir? I had to do a lot of digging to find out where the Springville Reservoir is. However, the Springville Reservoir in Camarillo turns out to be an excellent termination for the east connection. And here's an aerial view of the Springville Reservoir.
That's the Los Poses and Spanish Hills Estates, yeah.
And there's a Springville off-ramp that I never knew existed, and this is a little bit west of the Los Poses road intersection. This pink line is the original supposition on how the line would run to connect to Key Agus to the state water system, and that was gonna run down Highway 118, go across the 118 bridge over the Santa Clara River. What's been decided now is that it's probably gonna be better, and I think it's gonna be much better, you look at the blue line down in the left bottom corner, and that's gonna be potentially the new route for the pipe. So the pipe is going to run from the Springville Reservoir mostly across farmland, so it looks like the access is going to be much simpler than it would be than trying to go along Highway 118. So then it's gonna go across the Santa Clara River, probably go under the Santa Clara River south of the 118 bridge. The point of all of this is that dotted square, dotted rectangle that you see, that is the unknown part of how do we get water to Ojai. We have that three-mile piece that's open, or that's gonna be between the 30-inch line from Ventura and our 30-inch line, and then how do we actually start getting water up the hill? So I've put in that square RFQ, Request for Quote, something that I think we need to pursue. That particular portion inside that dotted rectangle, Casitas did input that to the original request in the Statement of Work going to Kennedy Jinks. They are the contractor doing the alignment study for the piping. Ventura denied inclusion of that portion in the Statement of Work. So the engineering is going on right now, and it's probably gonna be completed this fall for the state water project tie-in, but that little section that's left, how to get the water up to Casitas, is not included in this particular work. I recently asked Casitas, both Mr. Wixstrom and Mr. Baggarly, to issue an RFQ now, since why not? If it was important back then, it's still important to get that information on what it's gonna take to get water up the hill, and they've refused to issue that Request for Quote. So my recommendation at this point is that the city of Ojai could issue the same Request for Quote. It's not rocket science, there's no expense involved, and we could go one step further in finding out what it's gonna take to get water up the hill from Ventura. This is not a difficult thing to do, and again, there's no expense involved, and I have a lot of technical information that I could supply to anyone who wants to generate a Request for Quote out of the city to Kennedy Jinks. I think it would be a good thing to do. The second thing on the list was the new Casitas-Ventura Water Service Agreement. The old agreement established in 1995 has been superseded, or is being superseded. It came up for a vote in front of the Ventura City Council last night, and the Ventura City Council postponed the vote until May 8. The last I heard was that this is coming up for a vote at the Casitas Board Meeting tomorrow. I heard a rumor late this afternoon that they've postponed it too, but I can't confirm that. So unless I can confirm that, I certainly intend to show up at the Board Meeting requesting a postponement of their vote on this water service agreement until at least Ventura City Council is gonna decide on this measure. This was a very difficult process evidently. It went through a mediation firm. It was a six-month process to get this service agreement in its current state, and I've read it a couple of times, and I still have some questions about it. There has been no time for any public comment on this service agreement. It was publicized on the City Council Ventura's agenda last Thursday and came out in the Casitas Agenda last Friday. So there has been little time for anyone to review it. And I think the Ojai City Council needs to take a hard look at this. We get the vote postponed tomorrow, and then perhaps we can offer our comments over the next two or three weeks to both Casitas and Ventura about what we think of the service agreement. There's a lot there, a lot to review, a lot to learn. Golden State Water Company takeover, we just heard at the end of last week that that is now imminent. That is really apparently going to happen. And once again, I think there are a lot of questions concerning that takeover that we need answers to. I think we really need to determine or learn what is really gonna be the cost of this takeover. We're looking at a $30 million bond or larger, and obviously somebody's gonna have to pay that back. And how will the implementation actually take place? All the material I read really doesn't allude to the mechanics of how the takeover is going to happen. So I think there are many questions that need to be answered. I'm recommending that Ojai Flow, the organization that got this whole ball rolling, I think it would be great if they were invited to give a presentation to you folks to answer your questions and to let us all know how this takeover is actually going to go forward. And the final item is the water issues that we're facing as a city. I think we're just scratching the surface now. I think they're gonna continue to come up. There are a lot of things downstream, if you will. I'm recommending that a Water Advisory Board be established, I mentioned that earlier, to the City Council. I think the Water Advisory Board could provide assistance to the City Council in matters of water. You folks have so much on your plate, so many other things going on. I feel obviously water is very important, but I think we could establish an advisory board to help you do the data crunching, data gathering, and I know a lot of mechanics have to be worked out, but I think this board could really assist you in matters of water moving forward. What I'm requesting tonight is if we could have your blessing. Larry Yee, and I think most of you know Larry Yee, and I are working on formation of this Water Advisory Board. We'd like to have your blessing to come back at perhaps your next council meeting and present to you how we think this board should have a relationship to the City Council, what its purpose is, and potential board members, and structure of the board as we see it. So we would like to be able to come back to you if you so desire and give you that presentation perhaps at your next council meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Angelo. Thank you, Angelo. I had one question. Angelo, you can just answer it from there. Was a reason given by Casitas as to why they wouldn't just at least request for a quotation?
Yeah, the reasons I was giving.
Oh, I just told him he didn't have to.
Oh, he asked you to catch up for the record, because the record of the minute, the record of the meeting is the video.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Angelo.
Yeah, a couple of reasons. It was too soon to do something like that, which is very confusing to me, since at the very beginning of the process, this Request for Quote went in with the original elements for the Statement of Work. And we don't wanna spend that kind of money. We have to be careful in how we spend money. And a Request for Quote doesn't cost anything. So I could not make sense of the reasons I was giving for not initiating a Request for Quote.
But there is some language that we could just lift?
Oh, absolutely. In fact-
And make the request ourselves?
In fact, on your 10-point plan that was approved on January 10th, the original language from Casitas to Ventura for that portion of the scope of work is in that 10-point plan.
Okay, but is that adequate to go forward on a Request?
Well, I think, yeah, I believe it is. But I think more interestingly, the city can establish a dialogue with Kennedy Jinks, and it can go back and forth. Kennedy Jinks may say, "No, we need this." "Oh, yeah, we can do that." Or "What about this?" And I think something else that came up today that we were discussing is Santa Barbara is very interested in perhaps supplying a connection from the west to hook into their state water. They have, and I haven't been able to talk to the water manager in Santa Barbara, but evidently there's a pretty good-sized line that's terminating in Cartagena. So how far are we away from state water heading in that direction? So that could even be rolled in perhaps to the Kennedy Jinks RFQ that we turn out, saying, "Okay, explore the western route and the southern route. What would it cost to look at those kinds of things?" And all we're gonna get back from Kennedy Jinks is a quote for further study, but that's one step further along than we are now.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a, thank you, Angelo. I just have a question for Mr. Summers. Do we have any jurisdictional problems if we're asking for a Request for Quote in a jurisdiction that we have no control over? It's within the city of Ventura.
You have no problem asking for a quote to study the matter. You do have some complex jurisdictional and power and intergovernmental relations issues if you do anything further than ask for a quote. And to be clear, you don't have any power to build anything in Ventura.
Yeah. This, Mayor, this might be another one of those issues that the council directs staff to write a letter to the City Council of Ventura and requesting them to include us in an RFQ, and if not, let them know that we're gonna be willing to do it ourselves.
I think we already did that.
Well, we need to do it again. That's what my gut says. Also, the thing that concerns me the most here is the Casitas Municipal Water District. The word municipal is in their language. They represent the community. Why are they taking five months to, behind the scenes, to negotiate a water contract without public comment or public input? I'm flabbergasted by that. I just, I can't believe it was done, and I can't believe it was done without the public knowing it. Again, that's another reason to write a letter stating our disagreement with how that was conducted.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there any other presentations? It's all I have on the agenda. If not, we'll get to public comment in a moment here, but-
Yeah, Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
I was, I would like to, given what I think, what the feeling I'm getting in terms of being respectful of people's time here tonight, that it's in the audience, that we maybe reorder the agenda. And I'm thinking, my understanding is that there are some people here for Item 2, actually, that want to testify on Item 2. And what I would, I'm suggesting to the council is that we move Item 3 to the end of the agenda, and that we take up, in order, Items 2, 6, 4, then 8, 5, and 7, in that order. And then 3 at the end.
Let's go over that again. You caught me a little bit.
Okay. What I'm suggesting is that we do, in order, put Item 3 at the end.
In order, the first one to be taken up is Item 2? Is that what you're saying?
Item 2, then Item 6, then Item 4, then Item 8, 5, and 7. And then 3.
Somebody else get that down? I didn't get it.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
I wrote it down as well.
Okay, good. We've got three people to back me up. That's terrific, okay? So what is the pleasure of the council? Is there any other comments or suggestions on how we order the agenda, or is that adequate?
I'm fine with it, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have a question with that. I just wanted to, I don't know where the appropriate time is to say it. Maybe it is now. If I'm wrong, tell me so. But we used to have commission comments, a commission section. That was the first Tuesday of every month that I don't see on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on, I have no idea. Apparently it was not on.
Are there any commission chairs here, and do we wanna give them an opportunity after the public comment?
They're welcome to speak under the public comment, and we can give a little extra time if they need it.
Okay, perfect.
The, okay, and I would like to make one suggested change, too. I had requested that we have a possible closed session at the end of this meeting, but I think we've got more than enough to do, and I have dealt with the closed session issue to my satisfaction already, so we'll just pull that off. Okay? Well, if there are no other suggestions, any objection to the reordering of the agenda? If not, okay, so ordered. And then, Bill, you keep me straight on this. Be sure I call it. Okay, so now we go up to public comments, and why don't we, let's see, what do I have here for public comments? Well, I see Christine here, and that's from a commission's report. I'll tell you what, Christine, should we go ahead and do the others, and then we'll have you back clean up, and I'll give you a little extra time? Is that a fair deal?
Well, we used to be right before public comments, the commissioners were invited.
I know.
Prepare tonight. When I prepare the report.
Okay, but, okay, but is it okay if I call you on you last, or you wanna just, you insist on going first?
No, you can call anybody.
Okay, thank you. We'll give you extra time for that. Thank you. Okay, I got Star Crabtree. Is there Star Crabtree in the audience? Yeah, there she is.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm here tonight to give you an update on 1091 Kuyama Road. It's a single-family residential home in the city of Ojai that's been having weddings for at least three years. I feel comfortable giving the address out publicly, 'cause they're publicly promoting the address for weddings. I also want you to know, we've already been through the regular channels, my neighbors and me. We've all filed complaints already. We do know that the owners have been informed that they're not permitted to have weddings or events without a CUP, and yet they had a wedding April 2nd. Their next scheduled wedding is Saturday, April 29th. It's going to have dinner and dancing. The next wedding scheduled is June 10th, and it's gonna have dinner and dancing. And these are just the weddings that are online. And some of these weddings have enormous generators being brought in to amplify the live band, and so it's really, really loud. And it's just a flagrant violation of our zoning at this point. And you know, up into this time for the last couple of years, we've been really sensitive to the fact that these are people's weddings. So we've sort of just hoped that it would stop, but it hasn't. It's gone on for too long, and so we are going to begin calling, unfortunately. So I wanted to let you know that there are more planned weddings going on, and they're gonna continue to happen, and I'm hoping that you will go back and talk to the owners again and see if maybe they will stop.
This address is inside the city?
This is the city of Ojai.
This is inside the city?
Yes, it is. Inside the city limits.
Paul? I just wanna say that I've had some communication with Star in the past about this, and I've spoken to the city manager. And I, we've got, this is a flagrant, open, in the legal system, open and notorious violation of our city code, and there's got to be a way that we should be able to go in and shut them down.
Well, the challenge here, obviously, is we can't speak about any particular code enforcement case. Staff is aware of this, and we have been working on this particular matter. We will pursue all remedies possible to us. Unfortunately, we can't shut down an event that's in process. We don't have that ability to do that, again, unless there's some overt breaking of health and safety codes. But there are many other avenues that we can and will pursue, and we are investigating and looking at this one actively.
But that's, you say shut down an event, event in progress?
Correct.
Correct. What about the ones that have just been announced that are posted as future events to be held there?
Well, if we're aware of, I'm trying to speak generically here, if we're aware of anything like that that's planned, we will certainly, and have, and will, make the property owner aware that they cannot do those, and that it's not permitted.
Can we ask the police chief to comment on this, and what he might see as a rational way to prevent this from occurring?
And again, speak generically, because we can't comment on particular cases in public.
Right, we're just talking in generic.
I have a general question along these lines, too.
So, as you can imagine, the people that have planned their wedding have no idea, I'm sure, that this is a violation of any ordinance. And anything we can do generically on any event that's a violation of any of our ordinances prior to is obviously the manner we wanna go. The last thing we wanna be is the disruptors at somebody's special day, if you will. But I am totally sympathetic to the issue. I know historically there's been other issues throughout the county that this has happened where there's a zoning issue, and they have been successful at shutting them down. So this is the first time I've heard this address, but I'll be working with the city manager and city attorney to come up with a resolution to deal with any of these type of violations.
Okay, thank you.
I might also suggest, Mayor, that maybe the city manager or the city attorney write these next event folks that are actually on this website, send them a letter stating that they're gonna be in violation, and that, well, we don't have any-
Beyond the, you know, that's a good idea, but I think we're, under public comment, we'll not get through all of the items. There are many things that I think each of us individually should talk with the city administration about. If you can't talk about it publicly, you can at least explain what's being done privately, okay?
Right. The council can be given attorney-client privileged update on potential litigation matters.
Okay.
But it's worth pointing out as well that we were meeting on this case just a few hours ago. The city's very aware of the issue.
Mayor Johnston? An inquiry? Real quick. This is not just a matter of a, I believe, you're supposed to have a special use permit for this kind of activity in residential zones, my understanding.
It depends on exactly what the, there's, the rules vary depending on the type of residential zone, but in short, a permit is either required or the activity is straight prohibited.
Right.
It's not always permissible by permit.
So there may be multiple violations, because we also have a special, we have a noise ordinance.
Correct.
Specialist sources' noise ordinance that also may be being violated. And that is permissible to call with a noise complaint to the law enforcement.
Yeah, the sheriffs have the power to enforce the noise ordinance.
To get a police report of the noise violation, for example.
Yeah, absolutely. We can enforce the noise violation, and once again, you know, we wanna approach it in a manner that's getting cooperation. Hopefully, the people that are holding the event are, so that we don't become the sideshow issue, because the reality is, if it was, if we are successful at addressing it at the core issue, then we don't have to be necessarily the bad guy to go and shut down or dampen somebody's special day. I prefer to take-
I'm actually more interested in the documentation.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Ron?
Thanks.
Ron the Librarian? Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ron the Librarian is a good way around the pronunciation issue. I like that. So I am Ron Solorsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley, and this is National Library Week, for anyone who isn't aware. And for us, in the profession, this is a time for us to really think about what it is that we do and the positive impact that we have on the community, that libraries have on a community in terms of literacy and lifelong learning and the promotion and preservation of culture. We like to think about the ways that we have an impact on the lives of the people that it is that we serve. And it's in that spirit that we've been holding the conversations that I mentioned the last time I spoke with you all, community conversations throughout the Ojai Valley. We've held two so far, and there are three more planned for the Ojai Valley. The next one is actually gonna be this Thursday, that's April 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Topa Topa Elementary School. Following that, the next week on Thursday, April 20th, we're going to have one at Miners Oaks Elementary School. And the last one will be April 27th, also a Thursday, at the Oakview Park and Resource Center. So worth noting that these conversations are not happening at the library itself, they're happening at outside locations, so keep that in mind. And, yeah, I just hope that anyone out there who's interested in adding their voice to the conversation will join us. We've had, you know, again, two already. They were really good conversations. People from the community came in and gave us some really good feedback just about what they wanna see from Ojai, what they think about Ojai right now, and ultimately the way in which the library and other organizations can contribute to that vision and those aspirations. So feel free, absolutely, to contact me if you have any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Dawn Thieding?
Dawn Thieding, North Signal Street. As you're aware, cultural resources has been an important priority for the council for the past year and a half. At the April 1st special meeting of the council, there was discussion about giving an update this evening on cultural resources. My understanding was that it was to be agendacized and is not on tonight's agenda. I know that you have a very full agenda this evening, and in the spirit of providing the public an update, since that February 7th special meeting, I would request this evening that Consent Item D, which contains the February 7th special meeting minutes from the cultural resources be pulled to allow for an update on cultural resources this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Lucera?
Good evening, Mayor Johnston and councilmembers, staff. My purpose is to note clearly for the record that three members of this council, Paul Blatts, Randy Haney, and Bill Wyrek, voted against the expressed majority opinion of the people of Ojai in the matter of extending the term and increasing the percentage of the OTID at the last city council meeting on 3/28. The OTID issue has not yet been put to a direct vote of the people of Ojai, but the outcome of our last election provides an indicator of the public sentiment regarding the issue. The two candidates who ran on platforms of caution with regard to increasing tourism, Johnny Johnston and Souza Francina, won the election by a mandate. The public comments made at the OTID meeting on 3/28 also expressed the will of the people to proceed cautiously with regard to further spending to advertise Ojai to the world. Fifty-eight people spoke at that meeting and had their, and/or had their letters read, and 39 of them, or 67%, were opposed to extending the OTID beyond two years. and 39 of them, or 67%, were opposed to extending the OTID beyond two years and 1% of the TOT. Many citizens sent emails addressed to all five members of the council. According to Mayor Johnston's wife, a significant majority were opposed to extending the OTID beyond two years and 1% of the TOT. And according to Councilwoman Francina, the majority hovered around 90%. These emails were, are available, and with the permission of all council members, we can all calculate the precise percentage of the people who wanted to cap the OTID at two years and 1%. It should be noted that Councilman Blatts shared a very different statistical profile with regard to his personal email communications, but perhaps they were sent exclusively to him. At the last meeting, Councilman Blatts said, and I quote, "I have been elected to this position by everyone, everybody, store owners and people who don't want tourists, which I object to, and I have an obligation to listen to everybody and not make up my mind until I have all the facts in front of me and having heard everything." But it appears that Councilman Blatts does not hear what the majority of the citizens of Ojai are clearly saying to him and other members of the council. He also has an alternative view of the traffic issues we face in Ojai. Despite having no background in traffic assessment, Councilman Blatts designed his own traffic study, the results of which suggest that over the past 20 years, traffic in Ojai has diminished to the tune of 2,600 fewer cars per day. Does this figure strike anyone else as incredulous? Incredible? Similarly, Councilman Blatts implored us to trust his assessment of the more than likely weaker-than-expected effects of dollars spent on advertising Ojai to tourists based on his background in advertising. I looked at Councilman Blatts advertising for his own law firm and found that...
Are you about done, Peggy?
I am. That it's not advertised on social media. It might surprise you, has anyone ever put Ojai into a search engine? I put it into Google this morning at 7:30. You know how many hits came up on Ojai? It was incredible to me. Eight million, 130,000 hits on Ojai. That was at 7:30 this morning. At 5:20 this evening, that number had risen to eight million, 140,000 hits, a 10,000-hit increase in 10 hours, a 10,000-hit increase. These are not shopping carts at Vons. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Severo Lara?
Mayor Johnston, members of the council, staff, chief, I come to advertise something else, but I'm going to do it through our means and not through social or any other media, and we'll do that other ways. But as, I'm going to put on my board member hat for the Green Coalition, remind everybody out in the public that we will be having an Earth Day celebration. It's going to be different this year. And I also want to thank the city of Ojai for helping us fund this year's Earth Day. It's going to be at the Ojai Valley Women's Center. You could go to theojivalleygreencoalition.org website and find out the program. I'm also not going to take that hat off and put my hat on as a board member of the museum and thank city of Ojai also for helping, helping the board put on the centennial, which was well-attended, and I have to say that I had nothing to do with it. All my other board members at the museum had the majority to do with that day, and they did an amazing job. I'm just trying to learn from them how to make the museum better and for this community because it is an asset. And for my last minute and a half, I'm going to take that hat off and just speak as an individual member of, as a resident of Ojai. And I want to say that last city council meeting, I did hear that there might be a petition for our community development department, that a lot of developers or people in the public are dissatisfied with that department. I just want to say that that department has been a challenge, but I have full confidence that our new city manager, Mr. McClary, if there's enough assets that are given to him, I know the budget's coming to come up soon, sooner than later, I would please advise the council to give our city manager resources so that department could really thrive, because I have full confidence as, as a former elected official that we could do better as a city. And on top of that, it's many layers. It's not just that department, not just our staff, but our council. It's time to look at some of our code in the municipal code, because they are confusing, they are being misunderstood, not, I truly believe not intentionally. I think that there are specific codes in that book that we could make quick adjustments, amendments, so that it could be clear for our staff. So I would implore you guys to really think about that and take a leadership role, because it takes the full council to really support staff in that direction. So thank you for your work and thank you for what you do for this community.
Thank you, Severo. The, Michael Haley?
Mr. Mayor, city council. I just wanted to address the, these people that got kicked out of their yurts. You know, it's a very upsetting, I don't know all the details about it, but what I wanted to suggest, I mean, I've sat through a lot of zoning abatement hearings before in my life, and I've seen way worse situations than that go on for years, fines waived, extensions given, all that kind of thing. So I'm just wondering if there's anybody with a connection with the county who could say, it's kind of an emergency, I understand somebody's going to end up homeless, it's been very painful for them, could they give them three months? Could they give them six months? Could we do something? Is there any kind of outreach that we could do to the county, to code enforcement, to get some kind of help to the people? I understand it's been a very severe impact. Now, I don't know what's happened to all of them since then, it may be a moot point right now, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to raise the issue. I don't know what's being done, but it seems crazy that they get 30 days to respond to that when somebody's going to end up homeless. And I've seen really scoff laws, zoning violations, just get carried on and on and on, you know, pleading, you know, whatever. So, so that's one point. I just wanted to mention, too, with this party house on Kuyuma, you know, turn the utilities off. That's all you got to do. Turn the utilities off and invite them down for a meeting. Thank you.
For the record, the city doesn't have the power to shut off utilities on these facts.
That sounded a little bit like a medieval suggestion of laying siege to the, to the enemy. Okay, thank you.
Could I briefly respond to Michael Haley? Michael Haley, I did speak to the owner of the property this morning, or rather, she spoke to me. She told me...
Can you turn on her?
Oh.
Good idea, thank you very much. Okay, sorry. I spoke with the owner of the property this morning at length, and I'm going over there and see what, see what can be done. I want to see with my own eyes.
Okay, good.
But thank you.
Susan, was that inside the city or is that a...
That's in the county.
That's in the county.
It happens to be across the street from my deceased parent's house, so I know the people very well.
Okay, great. Okay. I have two cards that say Christine Golden, and if I had two together, that's three and three, that's...
I'll waive my public comments because you've been so nice about letting me do the...
Yeah, okay, we'll double your time. Go ahead.
So thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to give a commission report for Michael Addison, who had an emergency tonight and couldn't do it, so I said I would come and do it. And I encourage you to put this back on your agenda, because this is the fun thing that you get to listen to. I'm not going to stand here and complain, I'm just going to tell you some really good stuff. So first of all, I want to let you know that we have a display up in the city gallery, and this display houses two artists, Richard Amen and his son Wyatt Amen. And we have now acquired two of Wyatt Amen's incredible, you can look behind you, you can look over here, at these unbelievable ceramic sculptures that he has done. There are also goblets out here in the hall, and there are some goblets as well in the hallway that is part of our city gallery. And then behind Souza over there, you'll see one of Richard Amen's paintings and also over the bookcase up here, and there are additional paintings in the hallway. We are also displaying Susan Amen's work at the same time. So this is really the Amen family, and we now, the city and the community is now owners as part of your municipal collection of the Amen family, a series of works by all three of them. And you can read their biography, there's a wonderful biography on the artist in the gallery, and you can see that these are top-notch artists, not just in Ojai, but throughout the California art community, top-notch. So I hope that the public will come. The gallery is open during working hours, so come and see this, incredible new acquisitions that your arts commission has taken care of for the city. And just mention that some of the works are also at the museum because we forged a very close relationship with the museum. And we'll see just how close later, because there's an item on there, museum gates. Okay. The next thing I want to tell you about is that we have selected five artists to participate in our mentor program, a program that you fund and the citizens fund. I'm going to name them and tell you what their field is. They'll all be working with students. We are still in the process of putting the PR out to get applications from students, so any parents listening, any students listening, please apply for this mentorship program. You will get a stipend when you complete the program. It's a nice, healthy stipend to help you to further your art education. Our first artist we selected is David Baker, which many of you know, he's one of Ojai's prime photographers, and I believe he now leads the photography club. John Mederos is going to work with a student, and he's this incredible theater person that you probably also have heard of. He does improv workshops and other things. We've also selected Stephen D. Edwards, who is a glass artist. So that student will actually get to work in a glass studio and learn how to blow glass. Vera Long is a member of OSA, and she's a very multimedia artist and a painter, and she'll be working with one of our students. And our last artist is Amy Lynn Stevenson. And Amy Lynn is the gal that, if you've ever seen postings on Facebook, she does art painting parties at different restaurants. This is for adults. And you go and you have a glass of wine and you paint. That's not for the, for the students. But that's who this is, and she's also published several children's books. So we're excited at the caliber, we think we have such a high caliber of artists this year. We're really excited about this program. It's underway. What else do I want to tell you about? I want to let you know that we have two new members on the arts commission, Stuart Comer and Marcy Tasher, and we welcome them both, and they are going to add, but they've already added tremendously to our complement of seven folks on the commission. And we look forward to working with them. And while I'm talking about that, I would like to just make a little side note and say that your arts commissioners feel very strongly about keeping seven members on the commission. I know there's some talk about going down to five. I personally feel, this is me talking personally, that you're understaffed over here. These guys, this staff, like Severo was saying, they work so hard. You drop us to five, we're going to, they're going to have more to do that we're doing right now. It doesn't make any sense. It's not a better use of resource, it's exactly the opposite. It's going to put more work on them. So please, don't have a one-size-fits-all. We need our seven members. And I want to talk about residency, because I know that's come up as well. Imagine your arts commission without a Barbara Hirsch having served. She lives outside the city. Imagine your arts commission without a Susan Amen serving, who was figurative in writing your public art ordinance. She lives outside the city. Imagine your art commission without a Roger Conrad, who made your lighting throughout this whole hallway and the painting happen, and who works at the museum and contributes so much to this community. He lives outside the city. So please, when it comes to the arts commission, it's not broken, so please, don't fix it. Last, I want to talk about the vandalism that has happened to our latest public art installation, and that's the public art over at Libby Park Playground. And some creative person decided that they wanted to paint the lizard, and they put paint on the lizard. It's going to be pretty tricky to get that paint off the lizard. And the reason I'm bringing this up in this forum is because I hope the public, and so far from the feedback I've gotten, it's pretty much 99% of the public, does understand that this is another artist's canvas, and it's not appropriate, no matter what you think of it, or how delicious it may seem because it's white concrete, oh, I want to paint on that. It's just not appropriate. It's vandalism. It's going to cost time and it's going to cost money to have it removed. We're talking, we're going to be talking to Public Works about, perhaps, we need to have a camera installed so we can catch the vandals. I know the artist himself is very upset about it and wants to charge the people who did it. So it's, it's a pretty serious matter, and I would just implore everybody out there to appreciate what's there and appreciate it the way it is, and, and don't decorate it, and don't paint on it, and leave it alone, please, please, please. The plan is, for everyone to know, a skin of pennies to be applied. Now, originally, the thought was that we would ask school kids throughout the Ojai community to write letters and get coins from all over the world, and apply coins from all over the world to make the skin of the lizard. Don't know that that's going to happen, because now we're feeling that there's a push to get the lizard covered, because it's just, it's a concrete, white lizard, and I understand being an artist, how, what a temptation that is. And some people just don't stop to think, but it's wrong, I really can't do that. So we're going to work on that, we're going to see what we can do about finishing up that project as soon as possible. And if any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Wasn't that fun?
Yes.
Don't you want to do that every month?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think that word is what you think it means. I don't want to...
Are there any other commissioners? Chair is present.
They didn't turn a card in, so we'll proceed to the agenda next week, or we'll do differently, maybe. Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Did we pull Item D from the consent calendar, please?
Item D?
Thank you.
On the consent calendar, yes, and what...
Which letter did you say, Mayor Proton? B or D?
D as in dog.
Thank you.
As in David.
I'd like to pull F also, just for a comment.
Someone's coming.
Okay, is F, if not, let's have a motion for the balance of the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Mayor Johnston, you know, that, that woman was expecting to speak, I think during public comment, and she's been waiting so long.
She turned a card in?
You just told her it was too late?
Yeah, I just...
But, yeah, but, perhaps she didn't know. I just feel really bad, someone waits...
I apologize, I didn't get this in on time. So, I'll be quick.
A second. Is there any...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...infection to hearing that? I don't, what, what happened? I didn't have a, a card.
Oh, yeah, she, just now... I brought it in to wait. Just now.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll be quick.
Okay, this one time, and then we got to start turning it in ahead of time.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just didn't want to interrupt.
Oh.
Johnny, thank you, council members and new city manager. I really appreciate all the hard work all you guys have been doing. Things to me have been moving on more smoothly, just wanted to say that. However, I've lived here since the mid-'80s. I fully appreciate all the changes facing our town. Illegal hotels, leaf blowers, tourists with very noisy motorcycles, they're all awful. However, number one problem, water. If we have no water, we won't have a town. There's people who've moved here who actually did not know that the last big fire was stopped right at Rice Road. If there's no water here, we might not be able to fight a fire, right? So agreeing with the gentleman that spoke when I first got here, please, I've seen you guys at water meetings, get more involved. That should be, in my opinion, number one issue facing Ojai. There'll be a lot more dirt than leaf blowers can blow if there is no vegetation, because we've had a huge fire. We won't need to worry about tourists coming here, we won't need to worry about illegal hotels. So please, 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 water, thank you for your efforts.
We need your name, name for the record.
Michelle Thomas.
Thank you.
City of Ojai.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Could I request we take up the minutes in Item D separately?
Okay. So we'll take it.
And may, parliamentary inquiry, can we have comments on the, on the, on the minutes as to their contents, or should that be city manager comments if the question's directed to city manager?
The council is more than welcome to comment on the minutes.
Okay. Well, I would like to, Matt, proceed. I'd like to move to approve September 20th with an inquiry, September 20th of '16.[1798.46] with an inquiry, September 20th of '16. I want to, as part of my inquiry, note that in, in the minutes, this is one of the reasons it's good to have minutes, was that in September 20th, we directed that there would be a comp time policy revision within 90 days. And I don't believe that's happened. And I was wondering if we have an update on when we could expect that.
We were planning to bring something forward as part of the budget process. If council would like something sooner, we can work on that.
Okay, but we're.
Okay, I have an update. I'm not asking.
That was very clever of you, Bill. At this stage, I think we are merely correcting and approving minutes.
I move approval.
Okay.
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September 20th, and I will recuse my, well, I think you would recuse.
Yeah, I got to recuse myself.
Neither of us were on the council. Okay, Paul's got it. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Okay, so ordered. February 7th?
I would move approval with an inquiry with respect to answering the question from the constituent as to when we might be expecting a consultant engagement.
Okay, but why, let's not make the inquiries now. Let's just approve the minutes if they're incorrect, if they're, okay. Is there a second to the motion to approve the 7th? Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I'm just lost in the procedures on what you're doing. We pulled it to have a discussion. Are you saying we're not going to discuss it?
We didn't, we didn't pull it to have a discussion on the content, as far as I understand, or maybe you guys want.
Well, I think we.
Just let me answer the question. What we're doing is, is we are approving minutes and correcting them if they were incorrectly submitted. And the reason for pulling it from the agenda, I understood, was Bill wasn't here for one of the minutes, and Susan and I were not here for another set of minutes, so we couldn't vote. This is, I don't know, we'll ask the city attorney. Do we now take topics from previous meetings up while we approve minutes?
It's like any other topic that's not on the agenda. You can't have a long discussion of the matter. In fact, my recommendation is no more than two members of council discuss any one of those items, so as to avoid a quorum discussing anything. But it is legal to ask, as is at council member reports, to ask, what's the status of item, the item from such and such state? That's perfectly permissible. It could be done now, or it could be done by council member performance.
Interpretation, that's just merely that, if we wish to do it that way.
In other words, the questions that were raised by the Mayor Protem are not illegal.
I wouldn't ask, yeah. Okay, they're not illegal. It's a matter of procedure. Okay. For purposes of trying to expedite this, which I seem to be failing at miserably, that let us keep our approval of minutes to the content of the minutes, whether they're accurate or not, and then we can bring that up under council reports, or put it on the agenda for future meetings, or talk to the city manager.
About city manager report.
That would be fine. He'd be happy, you know, if he gives an ordinary report.
Yeah, so the inquiry, the city manager report.
Yeah, right. Okay, that'd be great. Okay, so we've covered the 20th, we've covered the 7th.
And I'll move approval for the February 14th special and regular meetings.
Were you here for that? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, this, okay. So the 14th, we have a motion, I'll second it. Okay, for variety. Okay, any objection to approval of the minutes? If not, so ordered. Okay, now we have, what, and the 28th?
I'm here.
Okay. You weren't here, but we still need to approve?
Yeah.
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any corrections to those minutes? If not, okay, any comment? No? Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Record extension, please, for me.
Okay, great. Okay, I pulled the skateboard thing only to make a comment, and that is, I mean, it's a great program, and people are doing a lot of work, but I noticed in the staff report, since this predated or preceded my serving on the council, I don't see anything that talks about the cost of the ongoing maintenance and electrical bills and the insurance. And that's certainly not a reason not to proceed with this and approve it. But I just wanted to make the comment that these are things that affect our budget. And even though we can say it's de minimis, it just seems to me that we should be including those in our staff reports as to what the actual financial impact is if we're going to approve it. So with that said, do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
I'm sorry. I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Done. Okay, now we go to.
Number two.
Number two. And number two is the public hearing. So I guess we open the hearing and take staff report? What, do we have, we have some confusion down there?
No, Mr. Mayor, none whatsoever.
No, the comment, quite frankly, had to do with the skateboard park. I just was marking when the, when the item was brought to council, and the council approved the project, we had the fiscal impact was addressed at that point. We estimated the annual electrical cost to be no more than $400 to $500 per year.
Right. And my comment was that the staff report on the agenda for a consent item did not include that information, particularly for those of us who weren't here for that portion of it. And I'd like to see it there, okay? Thank you. Okay, public hearing is now open. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing. This is a matter for a rezoning regarding the Bryant Circle area. We are recommending that the council introduce an ordinance that would make findings in approving the text amendment, Text Amendment 15-04, which would amend Section 10-2, 503, Table 2.4, allowed uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts, M1 MPD, and also amending the City of Ojai zoning map. The quick summary on this is, this matter was recently heard by the Planning Commission on February 1st. They did hold a public hearing. Planning Commission took public testimony and made a motion to council to recommend the approval of the text amendment. The proposed project involves rezoning those parcels within Bryant Circle. Currently, it's zoned as M1, light manufacturing industrial. The recommendation would be to rezone this to MPD, which is manufacturing plan development. The purpose of this is to bring the parcels into conformance with the 1997 general plan. The proposed project would also amend the text of the city zoning code to introduce additional land uses into the MPD zone district. I should note that this section represents the second phase of the Bryant Circle general plan consistently process that was originally brought to the Planning Commission and City Council in 2015. The purpose of doing this is that when inconsistencies are discovered between the general plan and the zoning, zone change, general plan amendment, or text amendment is the typical solution, as opposed to eliminating the inconsistent uses from the property. We don't want to create burden on the folks who are currently permitted and operating in that zone. By removing any inconsistencies between the zone district and the general plan designation, the city will eliminate any potential confusion over its own regulatory oversight. The area was originally a dairy farm and was owned for single-family homes. That changed, and eventually it was recommended that it be zoned for manufacturing, thus the M1 zoning. When the city adopted its land use element in 1997, a manufacturing plan development land use designation was created, and it provided for industrial manufacturing, research and development, office-based firms seeking an attractive, pleasant working environment within a master-planned industrial park, et cetera, et cetera. It also contemplated uses, including light manufacturing and assembly, small-scale warehousing and distribution, restaurants, delis, administrative offices, and other business support. Then in 2002, the MPD zone district was included into the city zoning ordinance, even though there was no land area in the city zoning map that was formally rezoned to MPD. Allowable land uses in the city's MPD zone district are consistent with the land uses allowed in the original subdivision and the CCRs for this area. The text amendment, highlighting a little bit here for the allowable uses, the uses that would be allowed in the MPD and M1 zone, currently the zone contemplates certain manufacturing and processing and limited retail and service uses. As proposed under this text amendment, the table would also include the following uses: health and fitness facility, studio, dance, art, martial arts facilities, delicatessence. Restaurants are an allowable use in the M1 and MPD zone, but unexpectedly, delis are not allowed. This would allow them. Also, equipment sales and rentals, business support services, real estate offices, security systems, burger alarms, and personal self-storage. Those are all proposed uses as part of the text amendment. There are two remaining existing use types in Bryant Circle that would be considered to be existing nonconformance if this change is approved by the city council. They are not allowed in either the M1 or the MPD zone districts, and are not actually complementary to the original intended uses. And those are retail florists and schools. These uses and others that may be operating outside the M1 or MPD zone district parameters would then be classified as legal, nonconforming, and they would be able to exist in a limited fashion, but otherwise would be discouraged to exist in the long term. Just a little bit of background, the Community Development Department did host a workshop on this matter back in December. Public notices of the workshop were mailed to all property owners in Bryant Circle and also those within 300 feet of Bryant Circle. We did receive one public comment letter from a homeowner who requested that the city construct, construct a sound wall in between properties on Buckboard Lane and Bryant Circle to better limit potential noise impacts from industrial uses. Another comment was received that dealt with existing development standard for property zone in the M1. However, staff is not currently proposing to carry over the 500-foot development standard to the MPD zone district because it would effectively wipe out permitting such, those uses in that zone. So again, the, originally, those uses were prohibited if they were in 500 feet of a residential zone. And again, staff is not proposing that we carry over that 500 rule because it would knock out so many of those uses because the zone is quite small and fairly close to residential zones. However, that's under the council's discretion. Be happy to answer any questions, and we'll turn to the city attorney if he has any additional comments.
I think you've covered the key available for questions.
Okay. I have a question. So if this is approved, would it impact, I just want to be clear that it wouldn't impact any businesses that are currently there, like there's Raw Food World, I mean, things that are not listed, or maybe they're considered?
If they're currently permitted, they would be allowed to remain in the zone.
Remain in.
Right, right. The issue would be with the ones that are considered existing nonconforming, there would be limits in terms of, I think, their ability to move forward in terms of expansion or things like that.
Right. For the two businesses, the one is a retail florist, the other is a school that exists now that would become legal nonconforming uses. They can continue in their present form. They would be limited with regard to expansion, and limited with regard to changes to their building. But they could otherwise continue to exist. And food manufacturing would, as I recall, be a permitted use in both the M1 and the proposed MPD zones.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Christian, Paul? Yes, I just have a question on, I see where it says business support services and real estate offices. How about general offices? And the only reason I raise that issue is the center portion of this development, I was on the planning commission then when that came before us. And it was never, staff never brought it to our attention, that the entire development, that center portion, which was really, in our opinion, being developed for general office, was not part of, was not part of the zone, the permitted use within that zone. And there, I know right now that there's one or two, if not more, general offices in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so offices, if you look to Attachment F, which is the full land use chart, page three of three, which is also page two of 25 for the item, offices of the three types, processing, development, business admin and professional, and real estate, would all be permitted uses. And in fact, at present, processing, development, and business admin and professional offices are already permitted uses in MPD, and we're proposing to add real estate as a permitted office in MPD.
Gotcha. Okay.
So offices would be, are presently permitted in the current M1 zoning and would remain permitted with the proposed MPD zoning.
Mr. Sumner?
Are you done, Paul?
I'm sorry.
Yes, no, that's fine.
I want to make sure I was following that answer.
Yeah, go.
Were you referring to Attachment F, for example, in your answer, on page 2-25? Page three or three of Attachment F? Where you referred to, for example, offices, real estate, and you have a P there in MPD?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. I had some more questions, but I didn't want to.
No, Paul's done.
No, I'm done. That's fine.
So in general, we're, my understanding, if I get this straight, is we're, you're adding some permissible uses on Table 2.4, page 2-10, Attachment A, 205, to the MPD?
Yes.
That's correct. But then we're also taking away a number of uses in the existing, in some of, some of the area that would become the MPD has some uses being taken away? I'll give you an example, like on the page we were just at, Attachment F, page three of three, personal services is permitted in M1, not allowed in MPD?
That is correct. That use would not be allowed in MPD under the current proposal.
And what is the rationale for that?
As I understand the rationale for that one, it's that there are no existing personal services uses in the MPD in the area to be rezoned.
But that doesn't make sense as terms of, I'm trying to understand there why you would not permit a personal services use. And there, I have another, a series of questions like that.
It's up to the council. The proposal from the planning commission was to not add personal services uses, although, as I recall, that question did not arise there. They didn't consider it directly.
All I'm saying is, I go through the list, there are a number of permitted in M1 that are not allowed in MPD. That's just one glaring example that I have a question about. We might have to go through them one by one, I guess.
As I understand it.
After we take testimony, maybe.
Right. The overall goal of the MPD is to accommodate the existing uses and shift it towards this business park-type approach that exists there now, as opposed to the harder, or not harder, a better phrase would be, the more intensive manufacturing and industrial uses in M1. I'm not sure the personal services fits in that category, but some of the others.
That's my point.
And that could certainly, the council.
Okay.
This is up to council's discretion.
Come back to it. Is there, are there other questions?
Makes no sense.
If not, I have one question. Steve, when you said that the legal nonconforming, is there also the intent that it either be amortized and discontinued at some point, or is it to be perpetuated, just not to be expanded?
Yeah, I believe it's more to the latter. I mean, they, they can continue in their present state.
And if they, if it takes a change of ownership or use, does it then eliminate it?
No, change of ownership.
Change of ownership would not. It'd be a change of use.
A business they can sell, isn't it?
If it went vacant for a while.
Okay.
180 days.
Then they could, right.
Okay.
Mayor, in that, in that same thought, those two businesses that we're talking about, are they permitted now? And how'd they get permitted?
I don't have the history on that. It was, would have been done many, many years ago. I'd have to look, look that up for you.
I think they are permitted.
I believe they are permitted, right.
Okay. So are we ready to take public comment? I don't have any cards, but is there, is anyone on this topic that wishes to be heard?
Let's make a motion.
Okay. Shall I close the hearing and take it under advisement? Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Hearing is closed. Okay, go. I think Bill is chopping at the bit.
Well, no, I, yeah, I'm sitting up on my seat. I, I, I just, there's some, I heard the rationale, but some of the things on the table don't seem to fit the rationale. And I'd like to go through the ones that bother me and see what my colleagues feel about that, in terms of restrictions being put on the MPD. And I'll go through the list. I'm going to start, I'm going to go in reverse order, all right? Starting at the bottom of Attachment F, page three of three. For example, you're permitted to have, the things that really stand out to me were repair services, consumer products allowed in M1, not allowed in MPD. I don't understand that. I don't understand not allowing personal services going up, continuing up. I don't understand not allowing client site services, maintenance and repair. I don't, I don't understand the rationale for that. Keeping, going backwards to page two of three, I don't understand what's so noxious about pottery shops and sales. I, I'm trying to understand why equipment sales and rentals would be allowed in P, but not in MPD. I, let me keep going here. Now I'm on.
Now, where are you?
I'm on, I finished with page two of three, and now I'm on page one of three. Yeah, we have a CUP allowed in M1, going from the bottom of page one of three, allowed for a library, comma, museum, but not in the MPD. I don't know what's noxious about a library or museum. There's a permitted use of a club, lodge, or private meeting hall, but nothing allowed in the MPD for that. And a CUP allows a small recycling facility in M1, but not MPD. I guess that's arguable. But those are the ones in the list that I just. But those are the ones in the list that I just don't see, I don't understand the rationale for.
Well, in general, isn't the, at least the old rule used to be, that is, you could not have a use of greater intensity, but not necessarily precluding one of lesser intensity, except if you get into the situation of compatibility, where you're just, you know, begging for tenants to be unhappy with each other because a lesser intensity use thing complains about what the zone provides? Is that, that's kind of what you're getting, right?
Yeah. I mean, what's the difference of intensity of personal services? I don't get it.
Yeah. It seemed like, to use a phrase from you, Paul, should be sort of self-regulating, I would think. They'd just move out if they found it to be incompatible.
I may like to get an understanding of what a personal service is. There's a tremendous amount of personal services out there.
Yeah, you and mine has to be there.
So I'm just saying, let's just think that thought, that through.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's not a personal escort.
I didn't say escort.
That's illegal.
We've already, Christine's provided us with all the fun we can handle tonight, so...
That's my suggestion of what we change.
Was there any conversation about why the excluded uses of lesser intensity? Or they just didn't...
Yeah. As I recall, the planning commission, these uses didn't come up in discussion, and this particular question didn't come up in discussion. So I would suggest that the council, considered suggested by the mayor pro tem, you can always refer back to the PC if you want to get their direct comment on this question, else you can act tonight.
Let's make a motion.
I tend to agree with the pro tem.
Who do I?
Air pro tem.
I do, too. I agree with you, Randy.
So I'm going to move approval of the ordinance of the Ojai City Council approving text amendment, TA 15-04, the city's municipal code. Allowed uses and permit requirements for commercial and manufacturing zoning districts and to amend the city of Ojai zoning map as shown in Exhibit A, as amended.
Is there any, for discussion, is everybody clear on what we're adding back in? Because some of them have not been added back in.
I did not list everything.
Right. So does somebody have what?
I can restate what I understand, and that would perhaps part that vehicle. So as, starting from the, from the beginning of the table...
Okay.
Page two of 23, also known as Attachment F, page one of three. It would be in the MPD to require, allow recycling facility, small collection facility by CUP, same as M1. Further down the page, allow club, lodge, private meeting hall as a permitted use, same as M1. Next, allow library, museum by CUP, again, same as M1. Turning the page...
Before we turn the page, we've got recycling as three different types, large collection, reverse vending, and small collection. Are we, are we saying all three are going to be permissible?
No, just small.
I understood it only small collection facility.
I just needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then on the next page, page 224, Attachment F, page two, equipment sales and rentals as a permitted use, and further down the page, pottery shops and sales as a permitted use, both same as M1. Lastly, on the next page, maintenance and repair, client site services as a permitted use, and personal services and repair services, consumer products, both as permitted uses. That's what I understood. Demotion be.
That's my motion. Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? The clerk called the roll.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay. Now, going to the new...
Number six.
New and improved and revised list. We go, you say number six? What did I do with it?
Just being...
Okay. Number six. Okay. The number...
Cannabis.
A review and discussion of the urgency ordinance adopted on November 15, 2016, regulating certain aspects of cultivation, use, dispensing, delivery of cannabis within the city of Ojai, and considerations of options to regulate medical and recreational cannabis.
Sure.
Let's see, do we have any?
There's got to be somebody.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I do have some on the cards here. We have Dr. Jack Patterson, but I, Dr. Jack is, what, in DC or something, and I think...
Is he skipping staff?
His second is Dale Hanson.
I'm not Dr. Jack Patterson, as you see.
Oh.
He is out of town, and he's asked me to read this letter to you. Mayor Johnston, city council members, I am sorry not to be making a personal appearance before you this evening. I thank Dale Hanson for delivering this letter on my behalf. In the latter part of 2015, the California legislature passed and Governor Brown signed into law AB 266, AB 243, and SB 643. These bills were to provide a legal framework for cannabis regulation in California. However, the difficulties were just beginning. Local jurisdictions were given the task, if they so choose, to draft their own regulations as a prelude to permits to be granted by the state starting January 1, 2018. I know you all know most of this. In Ventura County, eight of the 10 cities chose to impose bans on essentially all cannabis activity. The county board of supervisors quickly followed suit. Ojai City and Port Huonimi were courageous in resisting this. Port Huonimi only recently began working on their local regulations. Our city was much more proactive under the leadership of Councilman Bill Wirick. Councilman Wirick organized a study group, which met through July. Dale Hanson and I were pleased to be part of this group. Our work produced a term sheet, which was approved by the city council and forwarded to staff. Unfortunately, several important provisions of that term sheet did not find their way into regulations as published. Several provisions, which were not made and would not have been made, were introduced surprisingly, such as the lottery. It is unfortunate that the work of community members was neglected. Also, it appears that the staff document was offered publicly without review and approved by the mayor or the city council. As you undoubtedly know, the Ventura Board of Supervisors recently rejected the rather conservative regulations put forward by their staff to allow very limited cultivation and dispensing of cannabis in unincorporated Ventura County. This occurred after a year of public meetings, consultation with stakeholders, and in-depth staff research into the complex issues which surround legal cannabis. All this has left Ventura County residents with no legal, safe access to cannabis products within the county and with little prospect for relief in the near future, except for the city of Ojai. Remember the term sheet? Our own approach was presented as an urgency ordinance for licensing and delivery services in the city of Ojai last August. As of now, eight months later, no ordinance has been passed in Ojai. Is it not time to get over the stigma surrounding cannabis and accept this plant as a medication as have, as have we accepted so many other plants as medication? The average age of the medical cannabis patient, about 55 years, and the main indication is pain control. The list of other conditions for which cannabis is helpful continues to grow. Only the DEA is holding out rescheduling cannabis, and in my opinion, this is for political, not scientific reasons. You, the city council of Ojai, should be proud to take the lead in crafting good cannabis regulations, which will give your constituents what they need and what they voted for. Please revise these regulations and consider reconvening the task force to help you with this. It's important to get its right. It's okay to take leadership when others fail, and they're responsible. I appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Let's see. Peggy LaSara?
I don't have much to say. I just want to support what Dale has presented for the physician who wrote this letter. And I would simply state that I have a background in neuropsychopharmacology. I have a PhD. In my experience, I would recommend that everybody read a book called Drug Society and Human Behavior by Oatley Ray. It's, it's umpteenth edition now. Drug legality is usually a political football. It has very little to do with the psychotropic effects of the drug. Alcohol is my favorite example. It's the sledgehammer of psychotropics. It's legal because everybody does it. I don't, but most people do. Marijuana's been a schedule-two drug for almost 100 years now. I'm sorry, schedule-one drug. Heroin is a schedule-two drug. It's an, it's a, it's a neuropsychopharmacological absurdity, and it's just the way it is. It's a, it's a, it's a legal issue, not a, not a...
Scientific rational.
Scientific rational, medical issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Meg Goodwin? And Todd Mitchell's on deck.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, Meg Goodwin, 304 North Montgomery. I just want to say, please don't pick businesses by a lottery system if you can avoid it. I would really advocate that you pick them by their history, business history, and their intent. I think we really do need to concentrate on medicinal marijuana as opposed to, you know, some sort of recreational Amsterdam South or whatever. And I think people should also be allowed to grow their six plants outside as set up under the guidelines of the law, as long as it's not a nuisance to their neighbors. And I really do want to advocate medical tourism in Ojai, again, over the recreational just, I think if people could come up here for alternative healing methods, and if we could be really a bastion of creative healing and progressive movement in this area, it would be beneficial to all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Mitchell?
Hi, my name is Todd Mitchell, and I'm, I'm not a resident of your community, but I am one of the many applicants within your city. I am absolutely an advocate for the medical marijuana side of things. I'm not only a business partner, but I, I also have a fairly young son with neurological issues that medicines made from cannabis help greatly. As you're likely aware, just this last week, Governor Brown released his trailer bill trying to combine MRSA and Adult Use with Marijuana Act. So there's a, a new, newer set or an updated list of guidelines that any municipality will, you know, need to follow underneath. And one of the choices is for the business owner and/or with guidance from any ordinance that you may have, to choose between M or A for medicinal or, or adult use. And so I think having businesses stay within one of those categories that the community is comfortable with is now an opportunity for you. So I'm available to anybody, and whether it's individuals or with any questions, and I represent a company called Medicinal Greens, or I'm a partner in there. And we operate, we have cultivation registrations, working towards licensing in Santa Cruz County. We operate licensed or municipally permitted business in San Luis County, one in Santa Barbara County. And here with a partner and lifelong friend, Douglas Kern, that is a resident of your community. You know, we're, we're hopeful to, to be a part of this. And so, anyways, thank you. Can I leave these with you, or should I hand them off?
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Where, where do you live and how many dispensaries or stores do you have?
So what I, what we have is, we have six registrations for commercial cultivation in Santa Cruz County. Depending on the zoning and size of the lot, those, those cultivations exist from 10,000 to 40,000 square feet, or they can within the county. We don't have any that large, but that's, that's Santa Cruz County's rules. In San Luis Obispo County, we have a mobile dispensary or delivery service, a municipal license. In Santa Barbara County, we are the, we are the first recipients of a mobile dispensary or delivery service license in the city of Goleta. And so I'm a regular at these meetings and how these things operate.
And where do you live?
Oh, I live in Grover Beach currently.
Grover Beach? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Chelsea Sutula.
Delight.
Again.
Sutula. Yes, sorry. I try to avoid speaking at all, if all, at all possible, but I am CEO of Sespe Creek Collective, and I've applied for both permits here. I speak on behalf of a bunch of people that would be here tonight if they weren't exhausted with the process of coming and waiting and trying to talk and not getting anywhere. So I know that you've gotten letters from people. I know that this issue is still really important, and they're following it, but I think they're just kind of tired of showing up. I would like to correct one thing the previous gentleman said. The governor's trailer bill to reconcile these two things has just been introduced. It's not been finalized. There's still quite a lot going on to reconcile different aspects of the medical and recreational side, which don't really affect too much of what you're talking about today. So no need to overcomplicate the process. I would like to say, as far as the lottery process, any other RFQ your city would put out is probably not going to be subject to a lottery because you want to pick the best person with experience, maybe knowledge of people of your town. I feel like these people are going to be providing services to your people and your residents. I live a hair outside of the valley, on, off the 33. So I have a lot of patients already in this area that are rooting for us to get a permit and get them back up to feeling good. And I highly encourage you to pick people that have been doing this for a while, because it's not easy. It's not fun and games. It's actually really, really hard to do it well, to do it justice, and to be good communicators with you, which is what you need in partners. So, thank you. You have your work cut out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the cards I have, so shall we take it under discussion? Bill, you're reaching for the button?
I am. Mayor Johnston, I think I've already signaled a couple of things. One is that I think there's two tracks we need to take tonight. One, we need to think of some additional criteria we might want to adopt in lieu of a lottery. I have a couple in mind. I also wanted to, what was not included in the staff report was the, the work of the committee with the term sheet, that a couple of members of council I don't have, I don't believe have before. I'm going to pass that out. That was what this, the group did before. I'll pass that out for the record. And that, I think, is more germane to the, to the last, to the next discussion would be, how do we want to proceed forward with modifying to a permanent ordinance? But, so I'd like to first address the issue of proceeding with licensing under the existing ordinance. And I have a couple of additional criteria I'd like to suggest in lieu of a lottery. And I don't disagree with the idea of getting the number small, but I want to suggest a couple of things and see if they pass muster legally. One is, my understanding is that we could have a residency requirement for Ventura County. Mr. Summers, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes, it is legal to impose a county residency requirement. Now, to be clear, are you asking to consider a county residency requirement for operators, for owners, for operators and owners, if different, and/or for patients?
I was simply suggesting it for applicants.
That would be legal.
Okay. Applicants only. People getting the licenses.
Which would become the license holder if approved.
Right. And then the, the second thing is that...
That's legal.
I'm not sure how to incorporate experience into a, a criteria, frankly. That seems very difficult under the situation. But I believe we could have a maximum number of existing locations limit?
Since we have changed our ordinance...
Yes. In other words, similar to the change to ordinance, yeah. You could impose a max limit on the number of existing locations they run, either in the county or outside.
In terms of existing locations under the type of business being licensed.
Right.
Okay. So there's two types of licenses we're talking about.
And you could impose a limit for both of those? Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to throw something out without making a motion, just for discussion, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Well, let's keep going, and we'll see where we...
Okay.
At some point, we'll need a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Well, that's fine.
All right, I'm going to make a...
We can always amend it.
I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with medical cannabis licenses under the existing ordinance... existing ordinance with the additional criteria to the city manager's licensing application being, one, a five or more, a minimum of five years residency in Ventura County, and a maximum of five existing locations for each licensed category. And no lottery.
I second that motion, but would you also clarify the second thing that you just said?
Brian, yeah, I like that.
Well, in other words, no more than five existing business locations for either licensed category.
As I understand what you're saying, that would mean each applicant has to show that they have no more than five other businesses, counting the one they're seeking approval for in the city, not that there would be five businesses in the city.
Right.
Yes.
In other words, what you're imposing is a performance standard that applicants must meet.
Right.
They have to, they can have between zero and four existing businesses, plus the one they're seeking approval for, of each licensed type, in any location.
Not limited to Ventura County, but anywhere in California.
Would that include both dispensary and delivery?
Each.
Yes, yes.
Each.
Yeah, but I'm, well, I would like to organize it so that, yeah, that's what I'd like to do. I mean, I'm open to suggestions. I don't know how you'd combine them.
Well, because we've structured it to be each licensed category is tested separately, although one person could apply for both types.
Right.
That would be, that, what you proposed would fit into the existing scheme.
Right, so that's my motion.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. There is some limitation on how many of these we're going to have within the city limits.
Well, right now, there is none except the criteria that would limit it.
No, there is a limitation of three.
Three.
Three licenses of each type, period.
So without a lottery, how do?
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
Is that would.
Are you trying to delete that?
I'm trying to say that we wouldn't have the lottery limit.
We, I understood your motion to be to delete the lottery, but leave in place the three business limit. If that, I suggest clarifying that.
I don't know how it's compatible with what I'm suggesting. What if more than, what if more than three people meet those criteria?
It would be left up to the city manager's discretion, but the council has the power to change that.
Okay with that, too.
Okay, and.
Isn't there also the criteria that you would have for any other medical application? You would look at their experience and their, you know, there has to be some, there has to be some standards for that, I'm sure.
The council can set standards to that. At the moment, it asks for, the application asks for experience in running such a business, although bear in mind that in some cases, experience in running a business of this sort would bar an applicant because they could have a felony conviction.
Not a, not a, not a charge, but a conviction.
Yeah, conviction, no, charges.
Well, I'm okay with the, I'm all right with staying with three if that will get something passed tonight at the, with those additional criteria, without a lottery and city manager discretion. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I don't like the city manager discretion myself. I would say that if you have, the criteria are met by more than three, and over what period of time are we talking about? I mean, is it, what if we have three now, and six months from now, somebody else wants? We don't allow it at that point? Are we talking about initial licenses, ongoing licenses? What if 10 people meet the criteria? I think you have to have a lottery of those 10.
Okay, I'm, well, Randy?
Mayor, I just, again, I don't think the lottery is the right way to do it, but I wouldn't, and I don't know if I want to limit someone, especially in a specialty license like this and a specialty business, to limit people that have 10 businesses or 20 businesses. That doesn't discourage my thinking. I would like to remove that part of it personally, and I think that we could put together a committee and do interviews, just like we do for city attorney, just like we do for any other process, to councilmen and the city manager, city attorney, and let's interview these applicants, and let's pick the best three.
I like the idea of the interviews, but I want to go back to what you said about limiting the number, because we do have a chain store ordinance, and would that apply?
The chain store ordinance would not apply because these are not retail uses at the moment. The chain store ordinance picks up retail uses. At the moment, the only two permitted business types are delivery services and non-retail, non-storefront dispensaries. But it would be in the spirit as proposed.
In the spirit of.
Okay.
I agree with Mayor Protem on the issue of lottery. I think that, at least getting started, we ought to try to be a little more, I don't know whether you call it merit-oriented, or at least with some criteria, and that we would select the licensee. But I do have a problem with starting out with three and three when nobody else in the county, the county wouldn't even go for two on the basis that a comment was made, "Well, Ojai will take care of it." I fear two things. One, that we have yet to show that we have, are able to enforce our own regulations and supervise anything, it seems like these days, and I apologize to the staff for saying that. I don't know what is the cause of it, but the, trying to issue business licenses and building permits seems to be a real challenge for us to streamline. And so licensing or regulating anybody for any, anything right at the moment seems to me to be a challenge to us. And therefore, the number that we start out with, it seems to me, we would be better off to do one of each license and do it really well over the next six months, and then build on that. Because there are things in the original regulations that I thought were pretty good from the staff, you know, like trying to not have it be on Main Street and the arcade. On the other hand, if you have distances between where the licensees can go, and how close they are to schools and all that sort of thing, it's going to be pretty hard to have more than one in the Bryant Circle area. So I would move, and I don't know if I can get a second to this, but I would move that we, we start with one license each, one for delivery and one for dispensary by appointment or whatever the criteria is, and then work really hard with the staff and the committee that Dale and Jack Patterson are serving on or are volunteering to serve on, and see if we can really make that work well. And if we end up being the only place that seems to be, you know, broad-minded or contemporary enough to try to make this available to our citizens, then so be it, but let's be sure we do it right. I, it really disturbs me when, the more I read all over California, I know that there's a stigma attached, and people aren't willing to do this, and so I think we're being courageous in that sense, but I feel like we're maybe being potentially a little foolish if we bite off more than we can chew, and the state hasn't even issued their regs.
Point of order, is that an amendment?
Yeah, that was an amendment, yeah. I don't know if I, do I have a second? Silence was deafening. Okay, good point. There's no reason for me to continue selling the product without a second. Okay.
Well, I'd like to respond if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely. It's always okay, Bill.
I always have a concern with state-sponsored monopolies. In other words, I like, I like, I like people having choices, and one only each is not a choice. So that's my major concern with one. I agree with small numbers, but I cannot agree with one for that reason. I don't want to set up where people have no choice.
Okay.
Second, second point I want to make is that I talked to two city council people with Port Huaynemi today. They are, they are going on, they're hitting the pedal to the metal on this. And we won't be the only ones in Ventura County.
Then we have a choice. That'd be good.
And, and they're going to be, I want to serve our citizens with, you know, with business in our community, but the Port Huaynemi is probably going to roll out availability much more in the, in the center of the population density for the county. So I think that the concerns about, you know, a flood of people up here is, is not quite, especially with what Port Huaynemi is doing, is perhaps a little excessive concern. And I just, I think it's important, and I'm talking about just medical cannabis, the overwhelming needs we have in this community. I think we should find a way to do that tonight and move forward.
Okay, well, taking the risk of libeling in one of our neighboring communities, Port Huaynemi is facing bankruptcy.
That's why they're doing it.
Precisely. So I think they're doing it for the wrong reason. And two, next to us, Port Huaynemi and the city of Ventura have the highest per capita general fund income. And so for them to be in the shape they're in, with a fairly, you know, more per capita income than seven of the cities of the county, and be on the verge of bankruptcy, says they got some problems, too, as far as administering things. So I would hate to think that we were, you know, using them as our.
I'm just saying, we aren't the only game in town.
Right, and I'm thinking that's a good, I'm glad you made that point, because I think that it also means that we won't be the only game in town, therefore, there will be alternatives or choices. And if we move into it slowly, I just thought that it would be better for our citizens. One of the things that I am aware of, based on an interview with a family over the weekend who called, is they live in a neighborhood where they say two or three months of the year, two and a half months of the year. I'm not familiar with the agricultural business, particularly with, with grass, but there's something called skunk weed that I have become aware of now, and so are their neighbors, who say that, you know, for two months out of the year, you know, it's really offensive in their neighborhood. Now, we say that's illegal. You know, we say we're prohibited for being outdoors, and we have zoning laws against certain things, and yet there's one example, and I'm told by many people that there are a lot of other examples in town. I don't know how we're going to deal with all this, so I, okay, I've said enough.
Well, Mayor, that's why, I just want to tie back into that, to businesses that have experience with this. And there is a difference between how a business like this is going to be run and operated versus a standard walk-in mom-and-pop shop here in town. So I think there's two different stages. That's why, to me, I would want to look at someone that has, and by the way, I don't know these gentlemen, so if anyone's thinking I'm speaking on their behalf, I don't. I want the best possible people to be the resource for this community. So if we eliminate the lottery, we go into a interview process, we look at experience, we look at all of the, all of the tangibles that we want in someone, in starting out a business of this nature in our community. And I'm not necessarily, in fact, I'm almost in line in thinking with your one. I might agree to two, because I'm one of these, always looking for the happy medium. But, but, and then my last question is, I'm a little lost on the distribution point and the movement of the marijuana, the delivery service. Why wouldn't we want the, why wouldn't we want the same person doing the same thing? Why would we want a different, a different entity transporting it versus the person who's actually has the storefront, actually has the distribution of it, too? Why are we?
I could give a shot at that.
Do we have to do that?
Steve, is that, is that part of the regulation as proposed, or you don't have to?
No, right, right now, you could, you know, six, you could have six different permit holders, you know, three for the dispensary and three for the, for the delivery, as it's written right now.
But could you have one that holds two?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, well, the other point I want to make is that the medical cannabis licensing from the state, we're more or less emulating what the law is in terms of the different license types. There's different license types between delivery and storefront delivery, and we're making it non-appointment.
Is there, I'm sorry.
To add to that point, the state is, although, because those license, those regulations haven't been issued yet, nor have the licenses been issued yet.
I'm saying it's in the law.
The state, it is in the law. They haven't fulfilled it yet. The state is contemplating a system equivalent to what we have right now for alcohol distribution, in which you have retailers, then distributors, then higher distributors, then brewers, and that's kind of the right licensure scheme that they've set up. Hence, the state's got separate licenses for delivery services, equivalent distributors, and retailers. But the city's not compelled to separate those two licenses. You could, of course, require that the same person both run the dispensary, the non-retail, non-storefront dispensaries, and run the delivery services. But at the present, they're contemplated as can be separate, or one person can apply for both. And I understand of the applicants that have submitted applications to date, some have applied for just one, some for just the other, and some for both.
Do we have anyone in the audience?
I wonder, yeah, could we have someone in, someone in the audience, could we open the public hearing and have Jeff Kroll address that? He raised his hand?
Well, yeah, but it's not a public hearing, it's a discussion. If it's information, come on down.
Oh, okay.
Could I ask the maker of the motion a question?
Hello, thank you very much.
Pardon me just one second, and I'll be right. Would you divide your motion between, you know, the criteria and the issue of lottery, separate from the number, so that they could be voted on separately, at least for my benefit? Because I favor part of the motion, but not necessarily all of the motion?
I'll accept that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I just want to clean up two things. One is, under the state program that's going to start in January of 2018, delivery services have to originate from a brick and mortar. They do not, and they do not want to have people having delivery services at a person's home, or the, the issue here is the security. And when you have a brick and mortar, and you have onsite security, and you have video, and you have oversight from the city manager and also the sheriff's department, those are the things that you may not have in a delivery service, or even though you require it in your, you know. So the delivery permit in itself has an expiration date, in a sense, because where are you going to be in a year from now? When, in fact, you have three just delivery services, unless you allow them to be an appointment-only dispensary at their particular facility, that's going to be an actuum possible. Now, on the delivery aspect of distributorships, this is still being worked out at the state level. We are modeling the alcohol and tobacco model to be the choke point for the collection of taxes due to the state. So that's the distributor model. In addition, those distributors can not transport material off of a cultivation location without it being tested and licensed transporter to move it from point A to point B. So those are the things I want to clear up here. The other thing about lottery, I've been doing this for seven years, and I want to bring a little human side to this. I get 15 to 20 calls a week. I've not been in operation since April. A woman called me this last week, who is a wife of a man who's been on pain medications for 12 years. He's using a medication that, mixed with alcohol, could in fact shut down their respiratory system. She shared with me that she wants to get her husband off of 12 years of pain medications, because every time he takes a nap or goes to sleep, and he consumes beer, a couple of beers, she's worried that his breathing's going to stop, on top of that. So anyway, that's just the point. We need to get this, so we can get access as soon as possible.
I think we're on agreement that it's needed, so I don't think that's, you know.
Okay. I just wanted to clear those two.
I did have a question, a question again about, again, this, you just used the term cultivation.
About what?
Cultivation. None of these sites that we're looking to license are cultivating marijuana?
No, the dispensary or the delivery service, they're not cultivation. That's, we're waiting for either you to form up those cultivation or manufacturing-type agreements.
How does the dispensary receive their marijuana?
In our model is, we've always grown within our own ranks, within our group. We do not buy outside of our own group. So when a person can grow six plants, six plants, if they're an accomplished organic grower and their test pass, the excess of that material is shared with the other members. That's how our product lineup has been done for the last five years.
So again, my question would be, how does that get from point A to point B?
The member has, under state, under state rights, the member has a certain amount of lean, you know, the word, an ounce, for example, is what a person can legally have with a infraction or a misdemeanor charge. Up to a medical recommendation, a person can have up to eight ounces. So that individual could in fact bring, when we first started out, I actually had to drive to everybody's home, because there was no aspect of rules or regulations about storage. We're locking it up and putting it under security. So we kind of spread it out among our membership to be the inventory of Shangri-La. Okay? Any other questions? I've been doing this longer than anybody in this room, and, and, you know, I really in. I've been doing this longer than anybody in this room. And, you know, I really encourage anybody to ask me any questions, because I'd be more than happy to discuss and share with you how we've been operating for...since 2009. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Can we have the gentleman who spoke earlier maybe shed some light?
Yeah, I already called the name. Sir, the gentleman from Santa Cruz, or Grover Beach?
That's his here. This is yours?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add to what Mr. Cohen said?
I, you know, I entered this process by your city's agreement. And, you know, I've been a public servant at different points in my life, and I absolutely respect your conversations that you're having in front of the public, and your decisions that you're making tonight, under your discussion item. You know, I mean, we followed your ordinance the same way as we follow each individual municipality's ordinances. You know, my personal opinion is that you displayed a process for a lottery. And, you know, I would, of course, like to see you fulfill that. At the same time, we, you know, have our partners, including Mr. Kern, who's been a resident here for more than 12 years. And so, you know, being an owner of a company, and looking at how they're currently under the nonprofit rules, and how those are likely to change within the state of California as well, I, you know, I appreciate that you're approaching this, you know, with caution. I also recognize that there are very few models that can compete with gray or black market, with the amounts of taxes that are being proposed, both by the state and municipalities. And, you know, I'm guessing that it's likely that this, following the majority of municipalities, will probably consider doing a tax measure in the future. And so I think that that's more of the capacity to think about, is how do you not only have these regulations, but how does your, you know, law enforcement help to weed out the gray and the black area? Because there is no...there's no chance that my organization can actually compete with someone who's not paying somewhere between 20% to 30% of their gross towards these things. You know, to that end, I'm more of a supporter of the medical marijuana. And to that point, yes, I'm not a resident of your community, but I came here to speak on behalf of this. And, you know, I do applaud you for addressing this. And I applaud you for addressing this, including following the gentleman from Shangri-La, whom I've never personally met. But obviously, Ojai has quite the record. And I appreciate the former council members, or whomever may have been on the council at that time, who really stuck by and kind of formally expressed their, you know, regrets or concern for how things turned out previously. So I appreciate you moving cautiously. And I also, in order to look towards state licensing, there...I look at it back, timing it backwards. I think you just need to really have your ordinance in place with your ability to structure things. Somewhere by September would be nice to give your city and your staff the opportunity to work with the business owners to make those applications for the state licensing. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be a pretty continuous task from now till then, no matter how you approach it. So.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I have a question instead.
Thank you.
Just one question. It's true that the city can add two regulations to correct anything detrimental that comes up? Because, you know, if anything comes up, once these places are operating, we can address any problems, right?
Yes. We've ordered these to not create any kind of a vested right. So the council retains the power to rewrite them at will, or to revoke all the licenses as issued.
Okay, thank you.
Also at will. And the reason for that is that unlike, say, a conditional use permit, which is promised to run with land when issued, the regulations on these are very, very clear, as was the council's urgency ordinance. These are not permanent licenses. These are revocable at will by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCray, my understanding is the current vetting before the criteria I'm suggesting in my motion gets us down into the 6, 7 range?
Oh, boy. At the top of my head, I'd have to double-check. I hesitate to give a number. But yeah, I believe it would reduce it down quite a bit. I could figure that out pretty quickly, but...
My point is, we're down to that range. And the additional criteria, I'm not asking you to say how much more it would reduce it, but it would reduce it some additionally. The two criteria I suggested.
Right. The maximum five and the minimum five-year residency in Ventura County. Yeah, that would definitely reduce the number.
Just asking. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question of Mr. Summers. In structuring this ordinance, we're saying three, and that's what's on the table.
Currently.
How did...how was that developed? How was three? Was it some sort of a time, place, and manner restriction? Or did we just pull the number out of the air?
So that was done by myself. The council gave me the discretion to come up with that number. And my thinking was pretty simple. I happen to agree with Mayor Protem here. I do not like the idea of creating a state-run monopoly. So I was averse to the idea of just having one. And so with that thinking then in mind, I figured that the minimum number that you would want to go to would be three. With two, I think you get a situation where you could probably pretty easily end up at a monopoly. And I figured with at least three, there's some competition and some diversity. So that was the thinking, and why we came up with the three.
Okay. Now, was there any thought put into it? Because there are some locational restrictions.
Right.
That the city would only, with those locational restrictions, would only be able to accommodate three of each? A total of six? Or was it just a number?
No, it was just a number. It was based on that philosophy of not wanting to go one, and again, not wanting to go too crazy, and again, thinking that three would be the right number in order to accomplish avoiding the monopoly without allowing too many to operate in the city.
May I say something? The people that could best address the number three that we talked to unfortunately are in Washington. You know, the sort of lobbying for, you know, for medical cannabis, that they're gone. But they could explain why three is the ideal number for a small town like Ojai. So I'm in favor of three.
I was going to just suggest, Dr. Patterson suggested in his letter some sort of a revisiting of this with the committee to help frame this?
I think he was...correct me if I'm wrong. I believe he was referring to how to look at further development of the ordinance, to bring the study group back into session, or some study group back in session, in terms of part two of our discussion tonight, is how to look at moving from an urgency to a permanent one.
You may be correct, but Dale, is that...is there any reason not to pull the two together?
You know, what I heard Dr. Patterson say, in fact, in our meetings, is that cannabis has a wide variety and range of product. And it would be very difficult for just one in particular to have that wide range. It's many different subjects within it. And so you'd need at least two or three, three preferably, to cover all the cannabis products. Different patients need different kinds of things. And no one outlet is going to carry all of those, or even two, it would be hard.
I was referencing back, and Bill may be correct, but I thought when you read the letter from Jack, he said that he would encourage the council to reconstitute the little advisory committee and take a look at where we are, as opposed to trying to do this on the fly tonight. Or are you comfortable with what you're hearing?
Well, what I hear Bill Wyrick saying, I'm fine with, because that sort of goes along with what we've talked about in our study group. And I think that having three and having the five-year residency and all that, I think that's fine. And I think Dr. Patterson would agree with that.
Yeah.
So where are we? We had a motion and a second, didn't we?
Yeah, and we bifurcated. Where one was to adopt the motion on the table with the criteria. And then the second part of that was to have a motion with the maximum number, I believe.
Okay.
So I'll restate the motion with respect to that bifurcation, and see if we get a second. And that was to move that we proceed with licensing with a five-year residence requirement and a maximum of five locations with a...
That's five per applicant.
Five per applicant, with a maximum of...should I just...you want to separate the number from that motion? Okay. And with a number to be decided by a separate council resolution.
And with deletion of the lottery?
Yes.
Yes.
With the deletion of the lottery.
Second?
Second. I second that.
I just have one question. Paul. Is it five including Ojai? Or is it no more than five? So it would be six including Ojai?
My motion was five including Ojai.
Okay.
A question about the residency requirement. For example, with Medicinal Greens, one person involved with the company seems to be an Ojai resident. So could that residency requirement not, you know, just so long as someone in the company?
They would have to be the license holder.
The license holder, okay. Okay.
Randy, do you have a...
Yeah, darn it, I've seen your moment there. But give me a minute. No, it was on the...so we got five years. How are we choosing, again, the three winners?
The motion has a number to be decided by a separate resolution, which we'll take up next.
So choosing the applicant will come up next, that's what I'm hearing?
The number, maximum number would be.
No, but how are we choosing? Doesn't matter whether it's one, three, or 10. How are we making this? What's the selection process?
I was thinking that would be the next motion. In other words, the next motion would handle how we would add, in addition, choose, if these criteria didn't get down to the number we chose, the second motion would have to be how to choose, how to make that decision.
Okay.
That's what I intended.
I'm fine with that.
Are you prepared to have that motion this evening, or is that...
Yes, tonight. The next item of business.
Yeah, okay. Susan, you...
I'm ready to vote. I'm ready to vote.
We have a second, don't we?
Yeah, I second it.
Right. Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, next one.
So I was going to make a motion that we have...I'm just going to throw it out there. We'll discuss it. No more than three licenses in each category, with an interview committee system appointed by the city manager to vet qualified numbers of applicants greater than three. Is that legal?
An interview panel set up by the city manager is legal, yes. And the next question that would be, is there any particular criteria to be considered by the interview panel, or just the regulations, plus avoiding a public nuisance?
Yes.
Wait. I'll second that. Yes.
But I'm open to...
Well, my only request is to have the vote on the number, separate from whatever else. So can we...we're back to bifurcation. But, okay, go with your second motion on the selection committee, or whatever, without the number, and then we'll do the third motion with the number?
Okay. Okay, how about that? How about...I'll make a motion that if we will have...if the number of qualified applicants per criteria specified exceeds the number chosen by a council resolution, then a selection committee appointed by the city manager will make the final decision as to licenses to be issued.
And are you open for an amendment that we add two council people to that selection committee?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Less than two is...two or less is okay to include.
All right. I'll include two or fewer council members in my motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, so it's the city manager, two members of the council, and two other players to be chosen.
Yeah.
Or whatever number. Well, I'm a little confused, because it was two or fewer members of council members. So it could be no council members. And...
If the council wishes to include council members, you might specify directly. The point that I'm quickly checking is, if the city manager's decision is appealable to the city council, then I would suggest not having council members on the matter, because you couldn't hear an appeal of your own decision.
Good point. I'm going to not accept your suggestion.
Okay, well, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Okay, so we're back to just the city manager.
Back to just the selection committee appointed by the city manager to...
In the event that there are...
Get to the...in the event there's more than qualified applicants set by council.
Okay. Can we make suggestions? We'll make...who's on that committee?
Of course.
Yeah, okay. I second the motion.
Okay, so motion seconded. There's no further discussion. We'll have the roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes. All right, now we have the number.
Okay.
I'll move that the number be no more than three in each category.
I second that motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Susan.
I second the motion.
It'd be futile for me to take you more time, so...
No, it's rare that I disagree with our mayor. But in this respect, I feel that other cities, the very fact that they're dragging their feet is good enough reason for us to move forward, because that will give them impetus to move forward. And I think our fears, if I'm wrong, I'll find out, but our fears are unfounded.
Okay, is there any other discussion? If not, roll call?
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Okay. Are we...do you have any more motions, Bill?
Well, do we want to...there's a part two to discuss moving forward with refining what we have. Maybe time says we should table that, or it's up to the consensus of the council.
Shall we take the Prop 64 and bring that up?
The council could take it up at a later date. Just to note, in terms of legal matters, there's no hard deadline running to take any action. The suggestion would be, consider between now and January 1st, 2018, taking action to strengthen the existing prohibitions on all the other types of businesses. It's already prohibited under the current urgency ordinance, but it would be good to take the opportunity to belt and suspend that prohibition of the other business types.
And Mayor Johnston, just two comments, if I may?
Let me make one before I hold that. Matt, the suggestions that you were making for tightening things up, did that relate to the Prop 64, or did that relate to the previous urgency ordinance?
The Prop 64, to tighten up the prohibition on all the other types of businesses.
Okay, so you're saying that all that could be carried forward, maybe to another, to the next meeting possibly?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Bill, I think city manager wants to weigh in.
If I may, I just wanted to share very briefly with the council. The city attorney and I were very quickly on the fly, trying to come up with some criteria that we would use in the evaluation. So I just want to very briefly share this with the council, if you want to give me any feedback. But these are the categories that we thought that we would look at in terms of the vetting, the experience of the applicant, the quality and the comprehensiveness of their overall plan, their business plan, their security plan, all those types of things, the financial stability of the business, and the competency of their personnel.
Hear, hear.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Two quick comments. Personally, I don't have a lot of interest in promoting anything but, in making available anything but medical cannabis in our community. I want to make that very clear for the public. I'm interested in medical cannabis, not promulgating the recreational aspect. And number two, I hope we learn from the experience of this to help us decide how to further refine.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, anything else on this item? Okay, Dale? Okay, Bill, where are we on your revised agenda?
I believe we are next on the Ojai Unified School District.
Oh, okay, that's got a deadline, right, so, yeah.
And then after that is the museum gates, unless we want to do a favor for Christine. I don't know.
She's already adopted the agenda, and she's having so much fun, I'm sure she'll like to stay with us.
I've never seen you look so old.
What?
Not tonight.
It's at the end of the agenda.
Maybe...
Oh, have we just grown more cards?
Yeah, this is...
They're in order, chronological.
What about me?
Number four is time dated, timely. We have to take it up tonight. Number four, we have to take up tonight.
Let's do it.
Maybe people need a little stretch break.
Maybe we need to...
Okay, let's take... We'll take five minutes, then we'll come back in.
Okay, get some more coffee.
...direct commission, the other is through a limited competition, and the other is through an open competition. So I'm looking through those three items that if it does go as a public art in the acquisition, I'm just wondering how many more years it might be. So, that's here. Those are the hats that I'm wearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. I guess my reaction to it was twofold. One, oh, do we have more cards?
No.
We have no more cards?
Oh, I thought Christine was...
No, well, that was a second. Now, is this a debate?
No, I just thought we...
I'm here to answer questions that you have when you get into the matter of whether or not you want it to come for approval before your Arts Commission. I can answer questions for you and explain to you what the process probably should have been, what I believe hung it up, and will continue to hang this kind of thing up in the future unless it's addressed, and I can make a recommendation to you on whether or not I think, as your Chair of the Public Art Committee, it would be a reasonable thing to do in truncated fashion because you don't want to go back and start over. But we could step in at this point and give you an opinion. So I'm here to answer questions. Just let me know.
Okay. The two reactions I had to this question, and I'm, again, coming in late in the game, started, what, two years ago, roughly two years ago. I found it, well, almost absurd to hear of a security gate, the two years has passed and the gate hasn't been put up. So either it's not necessary as a security gate, or it's really necessary because we waited way too long. But a more important view of mine is, is that we should be holding ourselves, I believe we're the property owners, is that correct?
Correct.
That we should be holding ourselves to the same standards we're applying to everybody else in the community regarding historic preservation. And my recollection, when I came to town, I thought there were gates on that that went back when it was a chapel. There used to be a thing with a sign hanging on it, and it just seems like, if that's not true, then I guess it doesn't make any difference what the gates look like. But it seems like it was a mission style. It was put up that way 45 years ago, my recollection was, and I could be conflating it. But it does seem like that shouldn't, this is not necessarily a great place to start public art. Even I, my, I know I'm being offensive to the Art Council, but there are a lot of other places where public art is going on. This seems like this is historic preservation and architecture in the View Corridor. But anyway, that's, you know, just my view. Bill, you put it on the agenda?
Well, I think Paul and I did.
Oh, Paul? Okay.
Well, my only thought was that we have two commissions that act in two separate aspects of a project. The Historic Preservation Commission looks at the building and how the, these gates would interact with the historic nature of it. I know there were gates, it seemed to me, in the front of the building. We're talking about the side of the building this time, aren't we? Or are we doing both?
Both.
Both? Okay.
Both.
So, the, so that's one aspect, is I think that the building has historic benefit to the city. So obviously, I think that the Historic Preservation Commission should have, opt into the design of the gates. The question that became apparent to me was, is it a piece of public art as well? Now, it's a city-owned building, and if it's a city-owned building, and there's criteria on city-owned buildings as to what we have to do for the acquisition of public art, that hasn't been met. Because I think we have to have three bids, we have to have three designs, it has to be an open process, and we went to Doug and had Doug design it, as I see. So if it's a piece of public art, then I think that the Arts Commission absolutely needed to be involved in it at the very beginning. And if it had been involved in it in the very beginning, we probably just wouldn't have had one designer. We probably would have had more than one. At this point, I don't know whether it's reasonable to go back, if we do have to have more than one or not, or whether we can make an exception to this, because personally, it is a building that has historic significance, but these gates also, I believe, are part of our public art. There's public art in that, in the area in front of the museum. The museum itself, you know, has public art. So my thought was that it would be very appropriate for the Arts Commission to take a look at it and at least give us their opinion on the design.
I, I'll go ahead. I want to make it clear that when this money was appropriated, if you look at the video archive, for the purpose of a public art installation consistent with it being in the environment of an historic landmark. And that was the, that was the discussion at the time that Council made this appropriation in June of 2015, if you look at the video archive. I want to get this thing done, too, but I do believe that there is a level of expertise that could be added to improve the outcome by including the Public Art Committee in this process at this time. So I would agree, you don't want to backtrack to the way it should have been in the first place by, since it was Council intent to include a public art component. It should have been referred to the Public Art Committee in the first place, but that didn't happen. But at this point, I would simply ask, in terms of direction of Council, that the Public Art Committee be consulted in the process. And that's what I think would be helpful, for various reasons.
I just have, I just have one question. Where are we in the, Mayor, where are we, or Steve, where are we in the process on this? Are we in the design phase still, or has anything been constructed?
My understanding is that there were designs that were brought to the Historic Preservation Commission. The Commission rejected those. The applicant is working on a new design. I don't believe that that has gotten back to the Historic Preservation Commission. I would have to ask Mr. Akins or perhaps the Museum Director for further information on where they're at on their end of it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just have one other question. We own the building, so presumably the gates are going to belong to us.
They do.
So, as the owner of the building, we haven't had any input into the design whatsoever. It's only been the Museum Board.
Right.
So, under, under our lease with them, is it their responsibility to get an approval from us before they do any type of improvement to the building?
I would think so.
You would think they'd have to.
And this is a capital improvement project.
Right.
By appropriation.
And if it's the city that is going to be ultimately the one that puts its blessing on it, I think we have to have input from the Public Arts Committee.
I followed your logic up to the end there, and then I thought that therefore the Historic Preservation Commission was an arm of us.
No, no, I'm talking about both.
Both.
So, if I, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment? So, we went to HPC, we were scheduled for, Wendy Barker, Director, we were scheduled for planning, HPC didn't like it. They sent us back. Doug has completed a new design for the front gate, the archway. He has not completed yet a new design for the Blanche Street entrance. We will do whatever you want us to do. What we, this started before I was hired, quite a ways before I was hired. So we're just doing what we were told to do. And so whatever the Council's direction is fine, we just didn't want to pit two commissions against each other.
Well, if I could just jump into that, in fact, there's two levels of expertise here. They both should be having input into the process.
And we're fine with that. For me personally, I just want to know what's the order, what's the checklist that I have to complete?
This is a really low-level security operation, but good. Okay. Thank you.
The cameras have been installed.
So, we'll see who tore the place up.
The issue initially was we had vandalism in the courtyard.
Right.
But the reality is that the walls around are so low that if somebody really wants to get in, they're going to just jump over, so.
So it never really was a security thing?
So it's a deterrent. Well, our insurance company very much wants us to install.
Okay. Okay. We've taken the five minutes and gone well beyond it, but, okay. Brian's also been waving his hat. Brian, did you want to say anything?
Maybe it's, oh, you know.
Then, then we'll get to Christine.
Yeah, again, you know, you have competing designs, or competing, the potential for competing commissions, because this is a national historic landmark. It came before the HP, it's scheduled to come back before the HPC. The initial design was done by Doug Lochner, who's a well-received, again, he did art in the park for you, has done several pieces of public art in the valley. So it's not like we went to, you know, the local welder and had him do that. So there has been input from...
But the point is, that's not really, that's really not really the point. You know, the point is...
Just to say, let, let...
Okay. The point is input from the public art.
Bill, let's not correct the testimony from the public. Go ahead.
Well, again, looking at the input that the Council, or that the Commission, or that the Museum received, the, the consideration of the public art, or the Art Commission did not come up until just in the last six weeks.
And that's the point, too.
Six, well, again, it wasn't that we ignored.
Okay. We're not blaming anybody. What we have here is a case where Wendy has said...
So, again, from my, from my point, if we, it goes back to the Art Commission, I gave you the three criteria for selecting art.
Mm-hmm.
That's in the...
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, that's, that's a separate part. No, it's not incorrect.
Okay, thank you.
That's for a privately-held property.
Okay. So, again, having been associated with the Historic Preservation Commission, not once do I remember, well, we need to run this by the Art Commission.
Right. No one's to blame. We're just trying to figure out how we can reconcile it.
No, I'm just, I'm just...
And what we're hearing now from the tenant, who had the security issue, that it isn't as high a security issue, so now it gets us down to complying with our historic preservation and with our Arts Commission. Is it possible for you guys to do that in a quick expedited fashion? Let's ask Christine to tell us what she can do here.
Yes, I agree.
So hard to be patient. Not my strong suit. Okay, so here's some of the issues that I want to address, because I think it's important for the future that we understand this. I don't know what your leases say to the leasing, I guess it's lessy, in terms of the ability that they have to place public art on your city property. I don't know that there's any language in there that would have ever alerted anyone because we have a beautiful sculpt...
Christine, can we...
Now, this is important. We have a beautiful sculpture garden.
The other items are important, too. Let me just ask you to do this. How fast can you, could this name...
I'm going to get there. I can't answer that without giving you this background. You'll need the background. We have a sculpture garden over there, but the Arts Commission never had anything to do with it, and yet that's art on city property. So you've got an issue that has to do with the information that goes to people who lease your property in terms of public art. That's something that I believe the City Council needs to look at that, or the City Manager needs to look at that.
And how fast are you guys going to review this?
So it's clear. The second thing is, is what the Arts Commission does. We don't just select an artist. We provide a service to all of you.
Christine, you are arguing a case for the Commission.
No, no, I'm not. I'm explaining what the process is.
Yes, you are. Okay. Yeah. That is probably one of the reasons it's taking us two years to put gates up. Let's, let's, let's try to...
It depends on how fast a CAPA, a Committee to Approve Public Art meeting, can be called.
Right.
But because of what's been said out here, I don't, there's an impression that's been laid, that there's like the Arts Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, and that somehow these two are warring with each other. And that's an incorrect perception. And I just wanted to clarify that, because I think it's really important to understand that had the process gone the way it initially went, there would have been a public art jury, which would have included Museum Board members and Historic Preservation Commission members.
Right, okay, that's all process in the future. No one is blaming anyone, and no one is saying we're at war.
Exactly.
We need to know if this is...
Depends on how soon they can call the meeting.
May I make a suggestion?
Not yet. I'm going to have to take a little control here.
This is going to happen again, if you're not willing to hear why it happened.
Well, that's fine, and we, we can work on it when it happens again, but on this one, let's resolve something in the city. We have gates, gates on a piece of property that we, the city, own. We have asked, the Museum has asked, as the tenant, to have the gates put up. Money has been appropriated. The Historical Group has said that they've got a design. Can you look at that design, it's been done by an artist, and say yea or nay? And then we can decide whether or not we need to hold anything up?
The Committee to Approve Public Art, a meeting has to be called to convene the five members of that committee, and then Doug Lochner would make his presentation. We would go back to the Arts Commission and make our recommendation. Because there, because this has not gone in the order it normally does, that would then come back to City Council, to you.
Okay, well...
May I make a suggestion expedite?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to chuckle. Go ahead.
You don't want to hear what the usual process is.
I'd love, I'd love to see what we mean by expediting things in the community.
In light of the circumstances, may the next review meeting, where the concept is presented to the HPC, also include members of the Art Commission in terms of that review group.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea, Bill.
Can we have CAPA meet with the Historic Preservation Committee to do that, Mr. McClary?
I hate to throw a monkey wrench in this, but CAPA is for private development. That's what that committee is set up for, is for, is for private development.
We used CAPA for approving the lizard in the park. We used CAPA for approving the trimpin' sculptures. That was a public art jury. We've used these things for not just private...
It was the public art jury, it was not through CAPA, but I'm not here to start an argument.
Well, CAPA was used for the lizard.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes. A joint review session is all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Between the two commissions?
Yes.
It'd be legal to host a joint meeting of the two commissions if noticed as such.
Right.
The Arts Commission and the HPC could consider the matter together.
That's my direction.
All right.
Is there a second to that?
Didn't he just say it was illegal?
No.
No, it would be legal. Sorry.
What is the motion?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so...
And then, it's worth pointing out, it would be followed, of course, by Planning Commission approval.
Yes.
Assuming those two other commissions approved.
But there's a Planning Commission member purposefully on the Committee to Approve Public Art.
Hey, okay, well...
It contains a Planning Commission member.
In that case, yeah. I...
And it's the other things that we do for you.
I would amend the motion that this is not public art, because we will never get it done.
I...
Yeah, we will. We can call a CAPA.
This is an example of it. Is there a second?
Mayor?
Is there a second to my motion?
No.
No, but we have a second to the first motion.
Okay, so I was amending it, but I don't have a second, apparently. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm going to make a motion, we had that the, simply have a joint review session between the two commissions to review the...
Do you want that to be a joint review session of the Committee to Approve Public Art with the Historic Preservation Commission?
No, it would, a joint between the Art Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission.
So not the public art experts.
Special circumstance.
I move that we sell this as a script to the Montauk High Park.
I think that's, I think that's going to take more, no, that's going to take more time and be harder to do.
All right. You made a motion. Did we have a second to your motion?
I, I just have one, one question.
Do we have a second to Bill's motion? If not, okay, sorry, Bill, you're tied.
I second it.
Oh, you did?
Okay. Go ahead. Debate. Who ultimately has the final authority over the design of these gates? Is it the City Council?
Of course.
Yes.
Yes. It comes, it's going to come back to us.
We can do that.
Well, at the moment, it won't.
Or we got it right now.
No, if the City Council ultimately has the authority to have to approve this, then why would you say, well, we can do it that way if we want? Where else would it go?
We can make the decision right now.
Well, understood. If we had a desire, we're not going to do any gates.
Not to keep reviewing everything, just build the gates.
You could do that.
We have a second and a motion on the table.
Okay, we got a second and a motion. Is there any other, any other discussion? Okay, good. Oh.
Christine, the members of the, of the Public Art Commission, Committee are on the Arts Commission, right? So they'll be there.
There is, well, you have an Arts Commission.
Yeah, we don't want to...
Well, I'm going to answer your question, but you have to let me answer it in a way that'll make sense. Under the Arts Commission is a public art committee. There are two legs under the public art committee. One is called the Committee to Approve Public Art. It has more than art commissioners. It has a public art expert on it and a Planning Commission member on it. It has met to approve more than private development. Mr. McClary is incorrect in that. Then there is a public art jury that can be called, which has seven members and only one Arts Commission member. So asking the Arts Commissioners, none of whom are public art experts, to do this is, in my opinion, inappropriate.
Okay, is there further discussion?
This is a public meeting, so they can attend and weigh in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I have questions, which is, do you want your commission to do, not your commission, but your Committee to Approve Public Art, you want us to do what we normally do, which is to make sure there's a contract with the artist, to ensure there's insurance, to keep an ascension record and assign an ascension number, to keep records of all of this in an archival file with archival photography. We do more than approve. We are the body that keeps your record.
We're going to have the motion, we aren't going to have this continue forever.
Do you want us to do that?
You have a motion, you have a second to it. The motion is to have a joint review?
Joint review session.
And a joint recommendation to the Planning Commission.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
And Councilmember Haney?
I'm going to vote yes, but I'm just going to voice my, my concern...
The call doesn't allow for comment after you vote.
Well, I'm just going to say I'm disappointed in how this was just conducted. I'm just saying that publicly.
Well, good.
I'm disappointed in it.
Yeah, as am I. Okay.
That's it.
So you, yeah, so we have, you guys are going to get together and see if you can figure...
Which guys are getting together? I'm not clear.
Art Commission and the Historical Commission.
So members of the Arts Commission are going to get together with members of the Historic Preservation Commission? We're not going to use our public art experts? Okay.
No one prevents that. You can bring your public art expert with you. That's fine.
They should be, we, we are expediting the process.
Can that be faster? Getting together 12 or 14 people and getting together five? Okay.
Okay, I'll be happy to explain it later. Okay, thanks. Where are we here? Okay.
I think we're back to Chappelle's.
Yeah, okay. Deadline. Okay, what is your motion, or what is your report?
Well, we have a, we're going to have a staff report.
Okay. Steve, you want to...
If you like, yes. So, the recommendation is to authorize the City Manager to send a letter to the Ojai Unified School District indicating the city is not currently interested, not intend to enter a negotiation with the district regarding lease of the proposed property. The city is in receipt of a notice from the district. It was dated February 13th, 2017, pursuant to government code section 54222. City has 60 days following receipt of the letter to notify the school district whether it intends, whether to notify the district of any intent to lease the property. The deadline of that 60 days is this Friday, April 14th. So if the city is interested, we could give notice to the district prior to that deadline, and the city and district could then enter into good-faith negotiations to possibly determine mutually agreeable lease terms. Should note here, the district also sent similar letters to Ventura County Community Development Department, California Resources Agency, Ventura County Parks Department, State Lands Commission, and California Natural Resources Agency. Should the district not reach agreement with any of those noted named entities, the district could then offer the property to the public via sealed, via sealed bid for lease per California law. I just want to note that the notice does not include the property. That includes the park and ride lot and the skateboard park. That property is currently leased by the city from the district through December of 2023.
Miss Ma, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Basically, it's up to the council, though. If they want to, they can certainly send in a letter of interest and try to pursue negotiations with the district. Again, our understanding is that the district is not compelled to reach an agreement with any of the entities, but they would simply at least have to enter into good-faith negotiations. But again, there's, it's not a bidding process, it's not a write process, none of those six entities are able to come in and check the boxes, and then the school district would have to enter into a lease with them. It is purely discretionary, from what I understand, in our discussions with the city attorney. I did outline in the staff report that we're not aware of any identified needs or anything in our general plan, capital improvement plan, or any other proof plan that would fit in terms of use of this property. However, that doesn't mean that the council could not pursue that. And again, if the council, the city chooses to not reach out in this, at this step, doesn't mean that the city could not still approach the district down the road to discuss interest in acquiring or leasing the property. Be happy to answer any further questions about the zoning or the, I should note that there is a special housing overlay, which does cover one portion of the property. And that special housing overlay zone does allow affordable housing projects at a density of up to 20 dwelling units per acre. That could be considered through a ministerial permit process, as long as certain design standards are met.
Two questions. Is there any hierarchy in the agencies that are able to discuss the leasing of that property?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. And the second thing is, is our overlay a mandatory consideration in terms of whoever decides to lease the property?
You mean, do they have to build to the overlay zone?
No. Our overlay zone being on there...
Right.
Does it allow us to still utilize that property for affordable housing? Even if we're not the underlying lessy?
Oh, yes. Yes. In fact, what it does is it allows folks by right, if they, again, if they meet all the requirements, they would not need to come in and necessarily, you know, there's no, there would be no need to get a zoning change from the city, for example.
In effect, a permitted use under the present rules.
It would incentivize affordable housing, but it doesn't require affordable housing. Correct.
Right. And that, this doesn't change any of that?
No, the zoning change stays the same.
Okay. Bill?
Mayor Johnston, I think we, we have some testimony from the public on this, I believe.
Yeah.
I just want to ask if we do, before I...
Okay, which, this is item number four, three?
Four. Four.
Four. I'm not, oh, yeah, here's something buried down here. Yeah, we have...
And the reason I bring that up is I have some significant issues of fact that I take, that I dispute in terms of the staff report, but maybe we should hear testimony before I take those up.
Okay, yes. Peggy? Peggy?
Me?
Okay, Meg, you wanna go first?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanna say I would really hate to see that property developed into a commercial, some sort of hotel, Ojai Disneyland downtown thing, especially right now in light of our water situation. And if we're, because, you know, if you wanna develop the section two overlay into senior housing, that I would approve of because people could walk downtown and, you know, it's convenient. But I would just hate to see that property developed into a hotel or touristy thing. It's community property, it's zoned public lands. It'd be a nice place for overflow city council meetings that we occasionally have. But I would just hate to see it, you know, developed into sort of a, you know, resort hotel thing right now. We don't really have the need for it. We don't really want that, and I just would rather see the building preserved. You know, the daycare and the Chaparral extension, continuing education seems to be working pretty well for now. But if you wanna turn it into a wellness center with a senior housing there and some medical marijuana, you know, benefits, fine. Thank you.
I second everything that Meg said. I have this vision of Chaparral Auditorium. I think that the, the building has so much affective value for the citizens of Ojai. Everybody has associations with Chaparral Auditorium. In my fantasy, we've redone the inside to look kind of like a Roman forum. It has indirect lighting behind columns. It has beautiful tiered seating with cushions, and we would use it for city council meetings, and it would be comfortable, and it would be a place where these lights didn't exist. Thank you.
You got a lot of visions going this evening, okay. Okay, is there anybody who, Bill, did you have a card in?
I put one in.
Okay. They are getting gummed up here a little bit, but come on up.
For the record, my name is Bill Mylie, North Signal Street. Keeping one's options open is usually considered a good thing, and this could be an option for affordable housing, which we seem to have difficulty finding and getting. So, I would support the city saying to the school district, it is interested in considering the four acres that have a dwelling overlay on it for affordable housing, and the other four acres for the benefit of the public. I see two main reasons. One, I understand the land was given to the school district many years ago for the benefit of the public. They didn't buy it. Two, on April 1st, your council, in a goals and priority council meeting on Saturday, set among many of your statement, many of the goals, a statement as follows, and it's under the general plan section, quote, "Recognize the unique status of the housing element in the general plan and be proactively compliant." Interesting term. Proactively compliant. So, I strongly support sending a letter to the city saying we're interested.
I mean, the district.
No. I strongly support the city sending a letter to the, to the school district saying we're interested. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Bill. And Brian, did you have a comment on this one?
Just kind of for information purposes. The Historic Preservation came to the city council and asked for the funds because we wanted to get historical reports that were done independently of the, kind of the gun-for-hire type thing. So, we went to the city. They approved funds for a historical report for this building here. We thought it would be a good idea to, to do that, and also for the, for the elementary school that my father-in-law went to in the 1930s. We have the historical report for this building. We're going to review it at our next meeting, hopefully move towards making this a landmark. We have, even though we asked for that historical report on the elementary school so that we could be proactive, we asked for this a long time before it even started coming up. We still have not received that report. I had talked to the city manager, McClary, I think last week, and I was under the impression that a draft was here, but it's not on our HPC agenda even for this upcoming meeting. And so, instead of us being proactive and being able to answer questions on, so what is exact, what exactly is historical on this property, we're still waiting for a report.
May I comment on that?
And so, we're now, we're now essentially trailing rather than being able to be proactive.
Do you know why we don't have it? Or we were-
I'd like to comment. I have the back-
I can only go to, since-
Okay, you don't know?
Community Development Director. I've heard that they went to the school district requesting information and that it was delayed.
Can I add some information on that?
Go, go.
Okay, thank you.
The Historic Resource Inventory and Evaluation Draft was completed in January of 17. A cop, I have a copy of it. It was done. I'm surprised it hasn't been distributed to you. And the conclusion on page 38.3 says, "The results of this study determine the historic Nordhoff Grammar School, which currently houses the Ojai Unified School District offices, is eligible for designation as a City of Ojai Historic Landmark."
Okay.
So, that is the report that was done in January 17, and it, I'm surprised it hasn't been circulated more widely.
I am, Councilman Wirick, upset. We've been asking for this at meeting after meeting after meeting. When I, city manager McClary can tell you that when I received the agenda for our HPC meeting, I sent off a email to Kathleen Wald and copied Steve McClary and also our chair, Darwin McCready, asking, why is it, why haven't we seen this yet? So, we're deeply disappointed. We tried to get out in front of this, and now we're watching the waves go by.
Okay, but the good news is we do have a report that you'll be able to say.
Report has been done and submitted to the city.
Okay.
I'll check with the Community Development Department and see what's going on. I'll let the council know.
But I think, I mean, I'll just say, as you know, Mr. McClary, I asked this repeatedly myself over an extended period of time, and then it finally was reported to me, is done, and I got a copy and it's dated January 17, and I thought I would make a copy of the final page and bring that tonight.
Okay, we-
That is complete news to me.
Yeah, it was, yeah. I have some more comments, but when they're in order.
Okay, the, we've got the staff report, which is that we don't have any plans specifically. We've answered the question that the existing zoning is fairly restrictive, but housing is part of it. Okay, Bill, what do you-
Yeah, I wanna take some fundamental issue with the staff report. Number one, when it stated that the city has no currently identifiable need for which acquisition the property would serve, the land is not identified in the city's general plan, for example, that's absolutely incorrect statement. It is identified in the, in the general plan. And I know that it's kind of a technicality to say it's not included, but the notification of intent to ground lease given by on February 13th, 17, is 7.54 acres, not just the property where the bus barn is. And in fact, the general plan apparently has an error in it. The general plan states that map number six, it says site number six is owned by the, this is out of the general plan, "Ojai Unified School District, which has identified the property for possible residential reuse as part of the district's consolidation of facilities resulting from dramatic downturn in student enrollment. The site is occupied by administration buildings, and the city has concluded exploratory with discussions with the district on possible partnership activity, opportunities that, in fact, never occurred. There apparently is a confusion about the parcel number, which I think should not be an issue of technicality, which gets around away from the clear intent of the general plan that this was, in fact, in service to an identifiable need. Furthermore, I think that the-
What is the identifiable need?
Affordable housing in our, housing element of our general plan.
Okay.
I just read from the current status identifying, this, this is one of our available sites, which helped us get into compliance with our housing element. Our housing element, in other words, was certified on the basis of the available sites. This is one of the available sites that we, and, and what I'm trying to get at here is that I think that it is important that we look at every opportunity to, in fact, pursue our general plan goals. I think there are identifiable needs that we could list. There's a long list of them, whether we're talking about performing arts, whether we're talking about housing. There's a new state law that specifically says that you can, that school districts, SB 1413, a new law was just passed, saying that in September of 16, that the legislature fines and declares that changes made by this act are necessary in order to provide affordable housing opportunities to teachers and other school district employees. We have opportunities for, for example, doing something very innovative in partnership with the city, I mean, with the school district with respect to things like studio art facilities. We have the Chaparral Auditorium. We have, for example, a very active children's theater group in town that has no home now. You know, we, we have parking issues. We have, you know, you can go through the list. What I'm trying to say here is I don't wanna get into a debate tonight about uses, but I think that the, that the city should, and I'm gonna offer a motion, that the city should at least do a general and generic intent to negotiate from the standpoint of, of following our general plan to fully explore partnership opportunities. This is public land, in my opinion, that should stay for public purpose. We do not want it going for commercial development, which is what the next step is in the, in the school district's approach. They would next, if we don't engage in an exploration of partnership activities, of partnership opportunities, the next step is request for proposals from private developers. I think we should look into a proactive approach, look into our partnership opportunities. We're not committing any money from the city. We're just saying, you know what, school district, this is at the heart of our city. This is part of the legacy of our city. This is part of the public land for public purpose. It's part of our culture in our city, and let's see what we can figure out. I think, I'm somewhat very compelled to think that this kind of property should be open for a community-wide input into how it could be repurposed, and the city has an opportunity to push in that direction. And that's why I would, I just, I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion that we simply issue a generic intent to negotiate for lease without any further conditions.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Question of the city attorney, is there such a thing as a generic interest?
The statute just requires that the city, if it desires to issue a notice of intent to lease, the letter that the district issued is upon the terms that it would be a ground lease, not a purchase, and they're expecting a market rate of return, the negotiation can discuss all of those points. The city can issue a generic notice, in short, but it should realize that it would need to meet those terms in order to reach an agreement.
I, I understand that. I just think we should get into some negotiations on this.
Okay, but that's saying that, that the city would be indicating to the school district that we're interested in leasing that land at market rate for some as-yet unknown purpose or for housing?
That would be what the city is saying with such a letter.
We would be in the development business.
City would be in the land acquisition management business, which the city is in to some extent already.
Right, but the only permitted, permitted use right now, housing, okay. But that is our interest, according to the general plan.
Well, it's one, one purpose, and I just, I just think we keep it as open-ended as possible and see where it goes.
Okay, that's the motion. Other questions?
Yeah, you're aware that the bill states that this has to come from the school district?
Well, we might be able to work out an agreement with them.
Yeah, okay.
I'm looking for partnership here.
Uh huh, okay.
Well, my two cents on this is I think it'd been helpful to educate the public that charter schools have first options on that property. Affordable housing would be second, recreation and parks would be third. So, they have to offer it to all those entities before, before they had offered it to us. I would have liked to seen us be ahead of this discussion when they were doing their 711 committee, and when they came to a determination, we should have been in the forefront of discussions regarding the property then. So, right now, we're lagging behind. I'm with you 100% Bill, behind this. I would like to see what their intent is, because they are members of the community, they're not the enemy. So, I think writing this letter and maybe having a joint session with them might be beneficial for the community, something of that nature, but an open public discussion about their, about what their vision of that community property is, along with the community and along with the council.
Yes.
Question. We're saying we wanna negotiate. Does the motion have to include how we're gonna negotiate? Is it gonna be the mayor? Is it gonna be the city manager? We're just saying, we're sending a letter saying the city wants to negotiate. We have that, we have the right to do that. That means we're going to be doing that. So, who are we gonna have do it for us?
The council can specify if you wish. The default would be the city manager.
May I add a amendment to that?
Just a minute, Bill. Paul, I think that we could, we could designate who we want to represent as at a later date. The real question is whether the school district accepts this as a legitimate offer, and according to the city attorney, it is.
Right.
It's not a full offer. It's an intent to nego, it's an intent to begin negotiations, not a, not a complete offer.
And under the code, that then has a placeholder?
Sufficient to trigger the duty to negotiate in good faith. That's all the statute requires, is that the school district and the city negotiate in good faith.
Right.
There's no obligation for them to accept anything we offer.
But this would allow them as sort of a placeholder until this process?
It would mean that we'd start negotiations with them, and if at some point they deem that we are not in good faith, they would declare we're not and move forward.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, Bill, you have, you wanna say something?
Well, I would, I just, I'll add to my motion, see if I get a second, that, that, it's a little self-serving, but I've, I probably have done more research on this than anyone else. So, and we only have one attorney on this city council, so I'm thinking that perhaps the city manager, myself, and Paul Blatch be designated as the initial negotiating team.
I don't have a problem with that.
You say you don't have a problem?
I have no problem with that. Someone's gotta do it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Great.
Okay.
So, that's part of the amendment? That'll be the negotiating part?
Based on what you said.
The council can change any time.
Okay, well, let's repeat, reread the motion. It's basically to a, to a device-
An intent to negotiate, an interest in, an intent to negotiate a lease for the use of the property, and that the negotiating team would be the city manager, councilperson Wirick, and councilperson Blats.
Okay, any more further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes, and good luck.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blats?
Yes.
Let's try.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you, Bill. Now, where are we? Our modified agenda?
I think we're on, we did, oh, are we on leaf blower now?
Yes, we are.
We are on leaf blower.
Yeah.
That's, that's not the order.
She's my good friend.
Okay, I've got this item five.
Water, water.
I have the correct, yeah, okay.
What number are we at?
Okay, we've got-
Five.
Oh, no wonder I can't find it.
Quilici. Pronunciation. I wanna call you Quilici, but I don't think that's right. Is it Quilici?
Quilici.
Quillic? Where's, what happened to the eye?
Thank you, Mayor. It's Italian, originally Quilici. We say Quilice now.
Okay, well, I'm Italian, and I keep calling you Quilici, 'cause that's what I learned.
You have to do that with one hand in the air.
Okay, okay, I don't feel so bad.
Now, it all makes sense.
West Eucalyptus Street, I'm a resident of the city. I simply wanted to suggest that, as, as Mayor Protem Wirick said two meetings ago, we should either enforce the law or change it if it's not a good law, and then enforce the law. I much prefer the latter course, and I was sorely disappointed that that didn't happen two meetings ago. I think councilmember Blats made a very reasonable, in my opinion, compromise on the rules about leaf blowers. We can all debate the details. That's a common hobby here in the city to debate the details endlessly, but I think that an outright ban is not the way to go. And so, if you have something that is a reasonable compromise between an outright ban and, and no regulation at all, I would strongly suggest that you take that course and then enforce it. If you're going to refuse to change the rules, then I would recommend that you not enforce the complete ban. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of information.
Yeah, why don't we just hold till we hear from everybody and then-
It's not a, the, the current code doesn't ban.
It doesn't, no.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, okay. Meg?
It bans gas, but not all blowers.
That's correct. The current code bans gasoline-powered leaf blowers in all zones, but permits electric leaf blowers.
That's correct. Meg, are you?
I would just say please enforce the ban then.
Right.
And a few other.
Please enforce the ban.
Please enforce the ban.
Okay, Peggy LaSara?
Stay close.
Okay, Bill Mylie. Broom, broom, Bill.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Mylie. I have two points of view on the issue. One, I don't know the reason this item is on the agenda, when on the 14th of March, the council voted to study the future of leaf blowers and come up with something new. With evidence at that time submitted to your council on lower noise, lower emission, and lower airspeed, leaf blower technology, why change the rules now? Especially on the banning of gas leaf blowers in residential neighborhoods. Otherwise, why are you studying it? So, but I have, there's a second point. But maybe there's something I'm missing. I have assumed that after March, the March meeting, when you tabled the thing for a study, that a report is being worked on to be brought back, that the city manager, the public works director, and maybe someone from the council, they're all working on a new version, which will include new technology for electric battery, leaf blowers, and possibly lower noise and exhaust for gas blowers. But maybe that's not happening. There were no real criterias, I remember, or timelines that were set, so maybe what is being proposed tonight is the best option. I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, I can answer that for you, that yes, something is being done. I foolishly took the assignment to try to create a demilitarized zone and discovered I was just tiptoeing through a minefield. And I have talked to parties on both sides, and I'm not overly optimistic, and Paul can smile now, that there is a meeting of the minds or some common ground, but we do have a list of people that feel strongly on both sides and have knowledge, and we are going to proceed with the stakeholders' meeting to see what we can do, if anything. Okay, that's the answer to the question, is something going on? The reason why this has come back was a separate issue when it became, I won't say, new to, news to me, but Bill was aware of it before, that we have had, we have laws on our books that we tell the, the staff not to enforce. And so, the purpose of discussion tonight is the, at least from my standpoint, was to address that question that, how long do you keep laws on the books and tell people not to enforce them? Either repeal them, revise them, you know, or get on with it, but don't, don't suspend it forever. Now, it is true that this is coming very close together, and when I asked for the tabling of the motion when Paul made it, it was because the motion or the report on the, the agenda that night- night was to ban all leaf blowers, and it had been directed by unanimous vote of the council at the time. And then it was characterized as a racist activity, which at least we've had some apology, that that was maybe overstating the case. And so when we came to the meeting, I didn't know, I hadn't seen what Councilman Blatz had proposed, so I was looking for some time to see if there was a way to reconcile it. I don't know that that's going to actually happen. In the meantime, Bill brings up the point of how long are we going to leave laws without enforcement? I suspect if this is lifted, that we're not going to enforce it any better than we're enforcing some of our other codes, which means everybody doesn't have to be overly concerned in the short term. In the meanwhile, we will be back, the council did set timing. They said in not less than 60, nor more than, 60 days nor more than six months. My effort is going to be to have it back on the agenda at the first meeting in May so we can resolve this question for once and for all and go for the, well, I shouldn't say for all, nothing's ever for all here. But we then go forward to some of the other issues like water and other tasks that we have, so.
If I may say, I hope the council doesn't agree to do something that they're not going to be able to enforce very effectively by requiring that people who have gas leaf blowers cannot use them except in certain situations. They're going to have to go and get an electric one if they really want to follow the law. Otherwise, they're going to break the law. So I would suggest that with a couple of months, that's all, that the noise today is not any different than the noise a month ago. It's the same noise. And so a couple of months, why don't we just do what we're doing and get a new one, and then everybody will eventually feel good and happy about it all. Thank you.
Noise is only one of the factors that has been of concern to some people. Okay. Bill, you want to, or do we have some?
Did you want to start out, Susan?
Not particularly.
No, I'm tired of everything you do.
I was so hoping this would be last, but I think I would be in favor of, what do you call it, lifting the suspension on the ordinance? But then we have to grapple with the question of when, because I don't think it should be immediate. So I don't know if I am prepared to answer that question. Maybe you are.
Well, we can make a motion to lift the ban and not, you know, to be moving forward on it, say for, we could say six months, because we will be dealing with Paul's motion within, you know, probably next six weeks, in which case it might clear everything up.
Anna, I'm scared.
I just have a couple, I have a couple of things. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, a lot of time, two pages worth. And, yeah, I just, you know, I voted to move this thing forward at the last council sessions because of this. We just seem to be, we just can't seem to get it done. But in hindsight, I'm glad that we did postpone it because it did give us time, and I'm sure every one of us has thought about it, and every one of us has thought about the effects of any of this on our community. So I just, I just made some things here that I wanted to read publicly. First of all, I agree with the enforcement regulations. I think if we're going to have something on the books, we need to do it, okay? I think, I agree that we need to upgrade blowers, but I also think we need to look at all this landscaping product. You know, if we're going to look at putting battery and electric operated equipment out there on blowers, I'm not necessarily opposed to looking at mowers, edgers, line trimmers, hedge trimmers. There's a whole array of equipment that this industry uses that the technologies seem to be moving forward. And then Dr. Colome, if I pronounce his name properly, yeah, he's a smart man, and I'm not going to deny the fact that he has a lot of information to bring to the community. So, and those lines of his statement is true, and I had a tendency to agree with it. Within two to three years, the state of California is probably going to ban two-cycle equipment. Let's just think about that in the long term and then bring it into the short term. What can we do in preparation for that ban? So Mayor, my suggestion to you would be in your group, would be that we start looking at alternative pieces of equipment that we could bring into our community sooner than later, that we give, we give our maintenance and our homeowners and all users of this equipment the opportunity to mentally, physically, and financially prepare themselves for this change. And that's where I've gone with this. I really went 180 degrees on it because originally I wasn't going to, wasn't going to do any of this. I was going to stick to my blower, you know, and it just makes sense. There's another entity that's out there. There's a, I was looking it up today because someone brought up, the Santa Barbara has an actual program where they work with their gardening services or their maintenance services and teach them and train them and encourage them. So I went online and there's a California Green Business Program. We should be in that too. And we shouldn't just be thinking about maintenance. We should be thinking about all the businesses that are operating in this community. And we need to get a bigger look at the environment and the culture that we're trying to change. So that's where I am on that. Now, getting back to the ban today or enforcement of the law. If we ask a citizen to go out and buy a $200 or $100 electric blower, it may exceed or it may not meet the standards, or it's, we're asking people to go spend money foolishly if we're in the process of creating a sound policy and a sound ordinance for the community. So we don't have to say, let's enforce it, but then not enforce it for six months. Just let's leave it as it is, do your homework, do what you're, do what you're going to do for this community, come back to us and let's get this resolved, and let's think of the big picture, not the little picture. And let's think about what's best for all of us, this entire community. And having said that, you know, I see these gardeners on a daily basis. I interact with them all the time at Aqua Flow through my dealings in this community. I'd have no problem sitting down with them and being a liaison with them to have these discussions and to clearly communicate what the intended goals would be. And that's a cleaner environment, healthy users, okay? And us moving forward in this process instead of dragging our feet and in four years from now, having to make all these changes. Let's take four years and let's move this ball forward, and let's move it together.
In February 25, 2014, when the city council suspended enforcement of the leaf blower regulations, is in the special noise, I think it's Title V, Chapter 11. It was supposed to be temporary in short term. That's how it was discussed at the time.
Yes.
The existing law simply says no gas blowers. It has operational things associated with it. What's convincing me to try to lift the enforcement is that I don't view these as either or. Everything that Councilman Haney just talked about can be done simultaneously. But right now, you know, we're looking at maybe possible challenges to the Ohi area plan. We need to be consistent with air quality standards, and this is, would have that effect even though it's in the noise ordinance in terms of gas blowers. The gas blowers are still allowed in large areas. I mean, what we're debating tonight, what I hope we were debating tonight, was not changing anything in the law at all now, tonight. That yes, we have to change the law, but the law we have has been in place since 1999. We temporarily suspended it since 2014. To my mind, it's time to set a date and say, you know, while we're looking at how to maybe change the law, we're just going to end the suspension on this date and give a proper notice. And I'm thinking sometime this summer, like June 1st or July 1st. That's my thinking.
Okay, I would support that.
My view, I go along with a lot of what Randy said, the idea that it's a bigger picture, it's going to take some time, and so did no smoking laws. And as I think I may have said here before, or if I haven't, I've said other places, we don't have the smoking police. And this may not be a perfect analogy, but it is a cultural shift in what we think, and it also goes to technology. We are now, as Bill says, we're developing technology, well, Randy said it too, that will allow alternatives to this. But to me, we have to start making the statement, even though we're only one place, Ohi, it's when we tried to have no smoking in restaurants, think how long that was with people sitting at the table next to you in the smoking area, holding their cigarette to the side while they were having their conversation. That's how, most people don't remember that. I think by the color of the hair, I think we, probably a lot of us do.
Airplanes.
But you have to start and you have to push, and it shouldn't be draconian, and we should be looking at buyback programs where they exist, because there is some help there to help the gardeners or the people who may have some difficulty in converting the equipment. But if we can't even say that we're enforcing the laws that are currently on the books, laws on the books aren't just for us to decide which ones we enforce, they're to protect the people that the laws were adopted for. And so, not that we're going to go out and do any better job at enforcement, but at least the neighbor can say, you know, you really shouldn't be doing that, that's really against the law. I actually did that with somebody, and amazingly enough, they said, really? And I said, yeah, in addition to the fact that you're blowing dust all over the restaurant next door here and, you know, and the noise, et cetera. And the person said, and put it down. We need to start, you know, set the norm, set the standard, and then, thank you for not smoking. And gradually, people will get it. We got four years probably before APCD, as you say, that it'll be not only two-stroke, it'll be two-stroke and four-stroke is my guess. And I think people have seen the studies that have been done that show that roughly 30 minutes or so of some two-stroke engine gas, or blowers, generate as much pollution as a 150 Ford pickup truck driving from New York to Alaska. And so that's one of the things that the APCD is looking at. What worries me for Ohi, we're known as the community that cares about health and clean air. And for us, with the second worst air in the county, to repeal a law we've had on the books for 20 years doesn't send the right message to APCD, who is planning to standardize all the rules and not give us the special consideration that we've enjoyed up till now. So I'm not trying to shut everybody down, but if you have a law that says this, you can't have a leaf blower except in this case, this case, and this case, I've had people say, so why do they get exceptions? You know, and my view is, is we should have a law that says, you don't do certain things, and nobody does it. For example, we have a rule that says you don't use the gasoline engine because that's polluting, and we try to figure out a way to transition that, and we say, and you don't blow the stuff, just what our law currently says, don't blow it on your neighbors and don't blow it on the public streets. Now, it's hard to enforce, but at least it sets a parameter and a standard that is not unreasonable, and we don't end up with the idea of having who gets the exceptions and who doesn't if they comply with that. So that's my reasoning. Randy?
I just, again, I hear all of it. We're right back debating blowers. We're right back to it. You know, that's what we're doing. We're right back in it again.
What we are doing is we're setting the existing law.
But hear me out. What I'm just trying to say is that's what we're doing, my perception. And that's okay, but that just shows you how difficult this is. That's why.
Mr. Mayor, I can't believe we're having a discussion about going back to the old law when we have tabled my motion that is different than what you're saying you want to go to. If it's the desire of this council to go back to our old law, which we've done three or four times, I am withdrawing my motion, and I'm asking that we don't do any further research into anything and go back to the old law and start enforcing it. But I have a tabled motion on here that is absolutely diabolically different than what you're suggesting we are now going to enforce, and that's not right. So I will withdraw my motion and ask that the mayor suspend whatever's going on in terms of the research of any further technology. Because let's just go back and do it, and let's start enforcing it.
Paul, I'm sorry I upset you, and you think it's diabolic in some fashion, but it is not diametrically opposed to your motion, and your motion is still on the table. You have the right to withdraw it. But your motion included gasoline engines, and that is a slight variation from what I was just speaking of. I'm not trying to go back to the old law. I'm trying to lift the ban, or Bill and I have suggested that we lift the ban. We don't have to do it today, and we can have plenty of time for your motion to come up, and then we can discuss it.
But we already have, we already have a ban for a certain period of time into the future. So what are we accomplishing tonight? Absolutely nothing.
Well, that's one point of view. If you're looking at it as a message to the community that we're no longer suspending the enforcement of a law that's on the books, and that, and the message would be the gasoline engines still are not preferred, I don't know how the final vote will come out, but that's the purpose of it. It's not to preempt your motion. I think your motion had a lot of good points in it.
But we aren't, we aren't taking off the suspension. We're putting it out in the future. If we're going to vote to suspend the enforcement, let's vote to suspend the enforcement tonight.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's okay.
And then I'll withdraw my motion, and I don't want anything more to be heard about it, and let's just move down the track with exactly the law we have.
Right. But you voted to have the city attorney draft a total ban on these things, and now you're upset because we're trying to compromise it in some fashion that moves us forward with the issue? I don't quite understand.
I don't look at it as moving us forward. My motion had restrictions on the time and use of it. This doesn't have any restrictions on that.
This is not...
What isn't it?
Well, it's the, I was just saying, it is the law on the books currently, and we're not asking anybody to do anything, but to send the message to the community that we do not have laws on the books that we say don't enforce.
Well, let's enforce it then.
Okay.
Why are we waiting?
All right, I'll make a motion.
We both said okay.
I'll make a motion that we...
So prior to this...
I make a motion.
No, sir.
Let me make the motion, we'll get a second, and then you'll be the first we call on.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we, that as of July 1st, 2017, that any and all existing, that council directs that any and all existing enforcement suspensions of Title V, Chapter 11 cease.
I'll second that.
I sense what Paul was upset about, wasn't he?
Right, and my question is, what does that do to the ordinance that came back before as for a total ban? Does that still go into effect?
That ordinance was not adopted.
Wasn't adopted, yeah.
So what that, what the Mayor Protem's motion would accomplish is enforce the law on the books until, as, starting as of July 1st, 2017, between, depending on when the matter comes back, your tabled motion would still come back, and it would be a matter of the council deciding what laws it wants to change if it changes the law.
And I would...
And that's set to come back between...
But what are we, Mr. Mayor, what are we accomplishing? If my motion's going to come back before July 1st, then what are we doing tonight? We're still not doing anything.
Okay, and is there harm in that?
Well, I'm questioning why we even, what are, why are we doing it? What are we...
To send the message that we are moving in that direction to enforce whatever laws we have on the books.
But we're not going to do it tonight.
No, the reason we're not doing it tonight is to give, as a courtesy to the workers so they can make a transition.
But there's a motion on the table, Councilwoman, that says that we're going to have gas blowers. That's on the table right now.
The, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
The motion is to enforce the existing law with no changes, lifting the suspension, enforcement suspensions out of July 1. I think that's a reasonable amount of time. And the existing law says no gas blowers unless you're on a very large piece of land that is a certain number of feet away from a residential property. There are a series of operational guidelines about fugitive dust and operational times of day, all in that Title V, Chapter 11. Anybody can look it up. And I just think it's a backstop to say, all right, we're going to do at least this. This is going to be our signal, and it doesn't preclude in any way further changes to the existing ordinance. It just says we're not going to have these multi-year, endlessly discussed what to do in the face of enforcement suspensions. I think it makes sense, frankly, for us to send a signal that you should move away from gas blowers in residential zones, especially small parcels.
Until we change our mind.
Until, yeah.
Well, unless, no, unless we... Well, unless, no, unless we change our mind.
But I, but I just, I just think it's important that, that's my motion.
Okay.
So, is moving seconded for the discussion?
Okay. So, again, we're enforcing and not enforcing. That's what I'm hearing right now.
No.
No, we are. We're enforcing, but we're not going to enforce until this date later. That's what I'm hearing, right? You know, we're going to put the enforcement back, but we're not going to enforce until July 14th. So, unless something comes back before that, and then maybe we'll change that, and then we won't worry about enforcing on July 14th because we won't need to. So...
I'd be happy to enforce immediately if you want.
But that's okay. Alls I'm trying to say is, and how are we going to enforce?
It's not...
So, here we go again.
We have, we have a...
No, 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 hear me out. I have the floor. Please, please. How are we going to enforce it? So, again, let's talk about it. We've got, what, 16 hours of code enforcement right now that we've designated that STRs are his or hers designated get after it. So, then what? I know that there's a couple people walking around the neighborhood, speaking Spanish to maintenance people, and telling them all the woes and the bads of what they're doing, and then takes pictures of them. Is that what we want? And then the next thing is, do we want citizens turning citizens in? So, I'm just trying to say, I'm lost on this, and I'm lost on what this community's turning into. And we better take a step back and recognize that because we're just creating a bunch of crap. And it just doesn't make any sense. If we're moving forward, Mayor, with something progressive and thoughtful, and we're going to do it, let's just do that. And let's quit this crap of following people or chasing people or calling people in. Let's just stop the nonsense. Let's get this done. Let's do it right.
I guess I still have a problem. If we're moving this in a direction where we're going to have resolution over a new law, why in midstream do we say, "We're going to start enforcing the old law"? It makes no sense to me.
Well, okay. Susan, you have anything more you wanted to say? I think we've beaten it to death. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And we'll have your motion, or we'll have the subject brought back in the first meeting in May, and we can then...
Go at it again.
Yeah. Exactly. Full employment of sorts.
Job security.
Okay. What do we have left, Bill?
Unfortunately, you're past 10:30.
No new items.
Oh, nothing left, okay.
We can do council member, city manager, and future agenda, right?
Okay. Night, Bill.
We can continue the public hearing. On the public hearing, it should be continued to a date certain to avoid having to renotice it.
Okay.
We can, we can...
Oh, is that on the other one that we...
We can do the water. Can we do the water?
Emoelo.
Okay.
May I, may I make a motion? May I move that we continue that to the next council meeting?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Are we, we're saying that we're not going to discuss water?
We can't.
Unfortunate.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's what I wanted to do. Okay.
I'm moving that we continue it to the next council meeting, items three and seven.
Okay. Can you make part of that motion that we do that first so Renee doesn't have to wait three hours for nothing or four hours?
I think that's fair. Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, first item up, next one.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so we're now down to what, Bill?
Is that, is that motion passed? Are we okay?
We haven't voted yet. Yeah, we haven't, yeah, a vote.
You have to vote on it.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have what, council reports and manager reports, is that right? Okay, let's go with council reports. Who wants to go first? Paul, you got one?
Nothing from them.
Frustration. Okay, I apologize for that. Bill?
No, just...
Susan, Randy?
Yeah, I have something from, I just want to find it. I have something from VCTC that they did in conjunction with help of Ohi. They're buying them a new van.
Cool.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, let me get my glasses on. It's the Ventura Transportation Commission, and
it's Section 5310, funding a van purchase for help of Ohi. So, they have authorized an agreement with help of Ohi to pay for $48,000 of the van purchase. With the help of Ohi, their funds would come up with $14,399. So, I thought that was a good thing for the public to know.
Okay, great.
We did meet with Libby Bull this morning, and we're going to be forwarding to the city manager a position for assistant bull manager coming up in the next budget session, or if not sooner. But it's our thought process coming from the committee, and then we'll let the city manager look at it and bring it back to us as a discussion item.
Okay. I have no report back. So, city manager?
Yeah, one of the RFP for the cultural resources, we're finishing that. Mr. Vega and I are working on that. We'll get that out probably tomorrow. We're that close on getting it out. And then, under that schedule, a couple months to get the responses back. So, we'd be looking to bring something back, probably at one of the council meetings in, probably the first council meeting in June, I think is, if I'm remembering the schedule off the top of our head. So, that's where we're at on that.
Excuse me, Steve, can you clarify that?
Yeah.
So, we're writing the RFP. We're going to send the RFP out. We're looking for proposals to come back to write the cultural resource white paper.
That's correct, right.
And that's in June. And then we still have to, we're still projecting how long that might take for that individual or that entity to write that.
That's correct, right, right. And the item would come back to the council, to council for the award of the contract.
Right.
That was the direction from council, for staff to develop the RFP and then bring it back to council.
And that direction to staff was with the understanding that the county had somebody on board already, and you say that you researched that, and that turned out not to be the case?
Well, we've, Mr. Vega's been working on that. He's been, he's had several conversations with the staff there at the county, and the most recent conversation that he had, and excuse me if I don't have this completely straight, was he was getting into the nitty-gritty with the county staff in terms of, well, what's happening with the general plan update? And at that point, he kind of got, "Well, I'm not sure. I guess you'd have to talk to the consultant that's doing that for the general plan update. They might be possibly looking at cultural resources as part of that." So, he's exploring that vein a little bit further. But when we first spoke to the staff at the county that handles cultural resources, they said, "No, we're not doing anything of the sort."
Okay, so we, the idea of the quick and cheap was...
And if anybody has any more information that would help us, we'd be happy to pursue that, and...
I'm just disappointed in the timeline.
Yeah.
We spent over a year and a half on this, and now it looks like we're going to spend from February, probably another eight months, if not longer. It just seems like a long time. And so, I'm disappointed.
Maybe we should, not tonight, but we should maybe take another look at how we do it.
Yeah.
Because the idea was that it would expedite things because the county was already, had moved in this direction and had somebody who was familiar with all of us, and apparently that's not the case. But go ahead and finish up the RFP, and maybe Bill and I'll go to the county and see what we can dig out.
Sure, yeah.
And may I invite Dawn to give a very short comment on the process?
Yeah.
As a tribal representative, very quick.
Thank you. I recall that the RFP was going to go back to council or at least allow for some public input before that RFP was going out publicly. I think that was part of the discussion. The tribe hasn't been involved at all in reviewing it. There's concerns about whether or not, not concerns, but we just want to make sure whoever's being vetted, that there'd be some input and there hasn't been any...
I'll go back and double check. That's not staff's recollection.
And I don't think the RFP includes an identity at this point.
Right, it's a request. When the selection process is made, it'll be a public discussion.
Correct.
Okay, I thought the RFP was going back out, too, but maybe I was mistaken.
I certainly would not object to the city manager reaching out for advice if you feel appropriate to the tribal representative.
Sure.
It might be, why not?
Okay, fine with that.
And my comment would be that we expedite this. So, it's in your hands, Steve.
We expedite everything, council members.
Put it around with it.
Future agenda.
Okay, future agenda items. We guarantee this time, well, Renee's gone, but the guarantee that comes up first, and we won't, and I hope that in the future, we're able to limit the number of things we have on the agenda and not reorder them because it's really disappointing to people who come in. I have been in that place where two and a half hours later, the first item didn't get called on.
I just wanted to confirm on future agenda items, if I may have the floor on this.
Yeah, okay, what are...
SB 1069 is on the next meeting?
Yeah, for the will serve letter and that issue?
Oh, yes.
Correct.
That's, I just want to confirm.
Yes, we already have the draft.
It won't be the first item. Emoelo will be, but it'll be on the agenda.
We already have a draft in hand, and that's ready to go.
And may I ask that the, a discussion of the Water Advisory Board also be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Oh, yes, yeah.
The suggestion Angelo was making?
Yes.
May I, may I suggest that we follow the public hearing on the landscape water efficiency standards because the two subjects are kind of connected?
Yeah, that's first item up.
Yeah, and follow with the Water Board.
So, what do we have right now on the, on the agenda that we're all going to vote on or agree to?
Did you have some?
Without an objection?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to, we could get back. I heard four things. Water Advisory Board. I heard Mello. I heard...
SB 1069.
SB 69. And if we, if we have time, I'd like to...
And what about the RFQ, Water Advisory Board slash RFQ discussion?
Right, that's what we're talking about with the Water Advisory Board.
Yeah.
Got it.
What else did you have on your plan for the agenda?
Oh, boy. Gee, I didn't bring my list with me. Do you have it, Matt? Thank you. We have a presentation for Deborah Pendry. We have a crime stat report, which is a presentation from the police captain. We have a very quick discussion on the summer recess schedule. We don't have to do it on April 25th. The street paving and sidewalk plan and priorities from Public Works. The repeal of the youth commission is another item that we have ready to go. That's a commission that's been on the books that has not been filled or in active for a number of years. And potentially some other items, if we could get to them, but I think we've got enough already.
Yeah.
There's nothing else on my list for the 25th that I see as critical or timely or with council directed to come back.
I'd like to see the street paving.
Oh, yeah. And a suggestion, things like youth commission can be on consent calendar.
Yeah, it would need to be, yeah, introduction of the ordinance. Yeah, we'll be happy to put that on consent.
Okay, sounds good.
So, you've identified, well, we've carried forward a couple of items, and you've identified a couple of items.
Right.
And then I'll work with Steve and try to see if we can figure out the timing to get this kind of packaged up so we don't spend the whole evening, so.
Can I make one last comment regarding the two? Is OBGMA, I'm under the impression is struggling right now.
Financially?
In a lot of ways. And I know you're the liaison. Is there any way that we could get an update regarding that entity at the next council session?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're struggling. They do have some budget problems because they have enough, their extraction fee, I think they call it, for pumping water, and there's a cap on it at $25. So, they have to, if they go, they haven't even gone to the 25, but if they go beyond that, they've got to go to the state of California. And there is a suggestion from some of the pumpers that they think the people who are not currently pumping shouldn't get a free ride. As the extraction rate goes up, that puts it only on the people who are actively using their wells. And there's, there's quite a discussion going on, but it's...
I think there's going to be an evolution also with Casitas Municipal Water District with that issue coming forward and being completed, hopefully, with Golden State. There's going to be a vacant seat. So, there's a lot of things happening on that, on that board that I think we really need as a, as a council to all be a part of in the discussions and where they're moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, one other item that I heard requested from the public for the April 25th meeting was to have a presentation from Ohi Flow regarding the Golden State system. So, just...
I don't know if we have time.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, hold on that. They're going into negotiations. Okay, great, yep.
Got it.
Okay, anything else? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.